The, what they call the. Items of the new business. And who goes first? Which is the STR. And the special use permit modification.
It's this that goes over.
Yes. I'm sorry. That's the, that's the, yes. The objectives. Okay. So we'll begin. So our first item. Well, actually. Just have our first item of the winter calendar presentation.
Yes, so we purchased the three peaks range at seven oh one County Road one twenty. Previously, before we purchased it, it had a short term rental on it, so we've applied for a short term rental permit as well for the main house. And so we submitted our application, we have all the rules in place where we've kind of modified the rules just a little bit more. Added some more fire extinguishers. There was not a safety exit plan in place before, so we put those within the house, which you guys have documentation of as well within that location. And other than that, nothing else changed.
Any letters?
No letters.
No letters? I don't think it's public, but.
No.
Do you have a copy of the new exit route in your office? And the new rules? It would be with that when you're invited. I'm asking if those have been renewed.
Yes.
Okay.
Of course.
Can I ask if a five member panel is acceptable to you for a vote?
Yes.
Can I ask a question? I don't have anything about fires in your list of rules, like can't fires or any rules, things like that.
Yeah, it is in there. We had it listed, there's no rule, there's, there's no open flames on the property. So, and that is in our rules.
Is this one, one pages, the rules down here, is there, are there additional ones? See if they are. So is that an agenda to?
In my.
There's a STR left or a recommendation on the next page.
This is the action that goes into your books, yes. Is this one right here?
Yes, yes, and ours does say, oh, no open flames, and we can send an agenda to that.
Is that what you're gonna propose, no open flames?
Yes, we, there's no open flames allowed on the property, no smoking, no open flames, no fires, no candles, nothing of that sort.
You all did hold sign.
We do. Yes.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not seeing it. I'm, I'm looking for a complete list of your rules, so that we know that it's in there, because I understand.
No, I understand.
Did you see it?
Yeah, so if you, on the first page.
Okay.
Yeah. Very tough.
Yeah, it's the first.
Or any open flames. Okay. Can we expound on that and put like no campfires, no, for, you know, travel rules or whatever?
Absolutely, yes.
Because I looked for that.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, yeah, we can put it over onto the rules as well, because it goes on, but we can, we'll make sure that that is taken care of.
I just want to leave them.
Yeah.
What I'd like to see on your, under your rules. Third one from the bottom. You're not moving against illegal activities. What does that mean?
Well.
Now, that sounds crazy, but I.
Yeah. No.
Six hundred unit farm complex that spell out.
Yeah.
What property would you? Step back, roll around, illegal activity, one person swallowing, it's another, pretty much.
Correct.
Spell out illegal activity.
Okay.
Drugs.
So.
Paraphernalia, blah, 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 blah.
Okay.
Are you going to allow guns?
Okay.
Shooting.
Yeah, no shooting.
Is that a requirement?
No, that's not, that, I.
So I guess what we're asking is that the rules are a little slim, slim side.
Okay.
Can you expound on some of these things so that? First, the rules of camp instead of.
Yes.
Toys. Is there anything specific something you could, that you wanna see?
No shooting, no drugs.
Well, expanding along the illegal activities. Uh. Illegal activities, there also can be prostitution. I doubt that's gonna happen, never have. We're talking about in today's world, crazy, twenty twenty three is a crazy world.
Yeah. Is that something you'd like to see added?
Shooting.
Drugs.
Paraphernalia.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so.
Doing background checks and things, so. Do you have children now?
Yeah, no children on this property.
Yeah. What ages is that?
Eighteen and over.
Well, eighteen and over, here it is.
Yeah.
Because today, some children are sixteen or something, about all of this.
Yeah. It's, it's not on there, it's on, when they go to, like on Airbnb, it says eighteen and over, and we can put that on there as well.
It's just.
Okay.
And also, I. Phones be nicer. Just like.
Ours is much bigger than what you have. We just, that's what we submitted to you guys, and I'm not sure how it got printed out, but ours is much bigger.
You see where we're going?
Yes.
Because what we see is what we think is up there.
Yeah, I understand this, so we can submit that to, so you guys can see exactly what's up there.
May I ask where you're going to live while your house is being leased?
Yeah, so we have a cabin on the property that we stay in, and that's where we live.
That's a second residence then?
Yes, it's not a second residence, no, it's just.
It's just a basic cabin, it doesn't have an oven or anything, it's a basic cabin.
Yeah. No, there's no cooking, it's not, it's not a full residence.
See the old term for a bunkhouse?
Yes, that's exactly what it is.
Gotcha.
What are the questions for the plan?
So, this evacuation plan, plan from property.
Hmm.
Um, this is just what we have, we have lots and lots of mail. I think we don't, we require roads and. Escape route, this is our southeast, west, roads.
I was just told, I was just told it had to be a basic stick figure drawing, so I, I felt like I was going above and beyond it.
Well, this is, if I'm in your house and it's on fire, I don't know how long that.
There's only one way in, one way out, one road, so, but, yeah, there's only one road, it's just one driveway in, one driveway out, so to the main road.
Our whole property is fenced. And there's only one opening, and that's the one that will come in that.
Does it matter if you turn right or left?
No, you can go either direction.
You gotta think that probably two percent of people around the area.
Correct.
Get that.
We do agree, each of our guests, and go over everything with them personally, so, yeah, yes.
You said the whole property is fenced.
Correct, yeah.
So there's no worry about trespassing or anything.
You have at the bottom of the page, which page are you going over with them, so they initially?
We do not, we just do a verbal walkthrough, explain all the rules to them, show them the cabin, everything in the property, you know, within that, they're just in a, everything that they're in is enclosed within the one acre, so.
My suggestion, so future, just to keep people out of trouble.
Hmm.
When you do a walkthrough like that, then you have, you know, two pages of whatever you just walked through, because people only retain fifty percent over here.
Correct.
So eighty-five percent just went out the door. And you just show, this is what it is, the plan, you're the initial assignment.
Okay. That's a good idea, it's a recommendation.
Oh, it just keeps you.
Yes, absolutely.
They burn down your house, insurance company don't want that.
Yep. Hey.
You don't have to do.
No, sorry. We talked about it ironically.
Good.
For the short term rentals.
Yes.
And for the house and some of the.
Correct. Yes.
They still have it here?
No, it's been turned, it's been fully enclosed now, it's a full cabin now. That's just used for the wedding venue, not part of this.
Perfect question.
I'm going to motion to approve. The request for short term rail. With modifications to rules. And on. Fire regulations and illegal activities, including shooting and drugs. I would like to modify that, because shooting is not illegal, so just to have it, no shooting.
Right, this will be fine.
Is that right? Hmm.
Yeah, the thing is, it needs to be recommended information.
Recommendation.
Yes. Right here, sir. I'll say something. Skip this. Mary.
I approve specifically because they will be on the property during the rentals, meeting them personally, and have a big history at the property.
Carol. I approve because they're listening to us, they're reacting to it, they're acting in a good way. There's some, our suggestions are paid. To approve on not only on their business, but to help the cabinet and citizens. Yeah.
I approve, I know that they have a history of, the house has a history of. No problems, and then they follow through very well with that, because of the signs that they put before.
Carol.
I most approve, I think it's a good location for us. Away from neighbors, and it complements our business.
I will vote to approve on the basis that we've had no complaints about the business before this. And the suggestions that we've made will continue to be. Well received. Parents honestly. Next slide.
Thank you, everybody.
Permit modification for in mind. They choose the presentation. I want to. Please, you said one year. Or at the back. What's that, okay. You're, you're.
Okay.
We're doing the modification.
We're doing the modification.
Oh. Is that as you feel?
The trash business?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Sorry, I thought we had an opposite order, yeah. Trying to get me out of line. No. We were approached by disposal about. This is some more property and putting their trash business over there. We haven't, we are before. We're getting ready to handle that one, so. Seeing about picking up a new one and putting them in there.
So you would, you basically reestablished disposal on that property?
Yeah, on part of it.
Part of it.
With on the other one.
Where it be at? Which is on the north end of the property, near the south end of the property?
Let's, it'd be, what would it noise?
Where file trees.
Not that far, you don't, that, that won't go that far, no. Where the building is, they're gonna take two of the bays, and we're gonna put everything behind the building. And then, we, we've got permission to have twenty containers on the site, so we're gonna paint them all up the same as the building. And then confine them with containers, so you really can't see any of their stuff. Dumpsters.
Twenty two dumpsters, I'll, I'll think of containers, I'm thinking.
Yeah, you are thinking, right, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna use them as fencing, basically, I'm gonna paint them up and put them out there. So block the views and go out, or we can let, you know, or we can let them see the trash dumpsters, it's up to you guys, I mean. I thought that was, you know, paint them all beige or gray and blend them in.
We need the, they containers, but.
Yeah.
We got. No.
We want to ship dumpsters or ships?
Shipping containers.
Yes. Yeah, we're gonna put shipping containers around on a perimeter to kind of see, yeah.
It's like the one that's up there, can you drive, take your car, the white one or something?
Beige one, yeah. Yeah, did you drive by this, did I, you see, we, we put a one up over there already, so. Because we've already got permission, have those, we're getting all the great ones to have and everything.
Well. I want sort of public. Keep it better.
Yes, sir.
Right, here, no comments room.
My, my concern was just how, you know, not having to look at the blue rooms and the, and the dumpsters and all that.
Yes, ma'am.
Just take your, please, please. Roll the rusher.
All right. Why would you wanna relocate, okay, it's both of them, it's for sale.
They lost their lease, like, they're no longer have a custody over there.
I do, I didn't hear that from Greg.
No.
No, I didn't talk to him this weekend.
Yeah, why? I went pulling, and they asked me about reason, that's where first I went, it was very close. Is this okay, we have this conversation, I just.
No, you're supposed to be for us.
I, okay, well, they were asking questions.
I, I know.
All right, I'll, I'll explain.
It's very, it's very difficult. We, we like the fewer questions.
Yeah.
With the rest.
Sure.
Yeah, they ask, you answer.
They ask, and I answer.
They ask us, you answer us.
Okay. Okay.
One, my question, one to you all.
I don't know, that's.
So.
That way it's safe, it saves people.
Oh.
The three of us represent the great downtown city, and he own land to the east and to the north.
I saw that.
You know, Chuck and I talked about, can he do that with the plantations? I don't know, just at this point. But we don't wanna be too goddamn hypocritical. Here, Ed and them, they pay for the land, they pay the taxes, they do all that stuff. And who are we to say what he ought to be dealing with here, land? Another, and it can, it's a little tacky. Um, I'm not trying to be offensive, and I appreciate, uh. They call it capitalism, and I think that's, you're, that you're trying to do some of the stuff, Chuck, and I did think about, are you gonna try to get a commercial well? And we were a little concerned about the water.
Yeah, we'll honor those, and we'll put that in commercial well.
And we'll all have one, also, the state will approve all that.
Okay.
Yeah, they're talking already, it's all I had to say.
Okay, so you're, you're on two different ones now, right?
I'm sorry.
Two different.
That's the only reason we're here.
Okay. All right. Okay. Uh, any further public comments?
What, uh. I would like to know. What Ed proposed for the lumber yard. Now, there has been lumber out there. And we kind of have a problem with that, because they don't keep the packaging off, the lumber picked up. The prevailing winds bring it all over on us all the time. Thank God, we have shopping bags that we get to take with us.
Yeah, do I comment? Yeah. Uh, the lumber yards, no more of that, it's not there anymore, they moved on. And so, yeah, we're playing that ball out south, and then they got it over there. Um, I didn't, you know, if you were to stop by and pull me, it was picking up one thing, and then I'm, I'm, I'd be about playing out of, you know, shut my opponent out once, or, I mean, you drive by our house every day, you know, there's problems with it. You know, I would more than welcome, you know, visit, because I mean, you know, your trash is going, they want you to deal with it, and I should, but. So, does that answer your question? I mean, every time you come to town, you guys buy there, right?
Right.
So, I mean, if there was a problem, I wish you would have told me, and we would have made it right, because.
All right, this is in this place for our neighbors.
It's like.
There was a lot of trash. Is this, all the stuff that's there now, all the, whatever it is, is that gonna stay there?
Oh, yeah, that one.
Right next to it?
Yeah, it's gonna be right next, next to that big building.
Are you gonna, are you gonna put all these containers all the way around that whole thing, including all the stuff that's there now? No, just the containers are going around the trash?
Is, uh, is this and that, and the proposed?
That's.
I think.
Yeah, that's part two, this is the part about the trash company first. And then, about the trash company first.
Oh, I see.
And then, then after that meeting, we'll have this meeting on that part of it.
All right.
I don't mean to keep talking, but it's.
I, I have Chuck.
Chuck Roy.
If I can get a copy of the list of people coming, that came in, if everybody signed that, I think I can use that. You want it now? No, I want it after the meeting, or to creature. As long as everybody signed it. Yeah, awesome.
We have a light more, I'd love to see, I'm out of this, this is, I mean, I can't compute what's going on here, as far as the containers, but, I mean, it just doesn't make sense.
Well, I understand, I did it. Everything, you know, my own disposal, right? You're gonna pick up the whole thing and move it so it can be saved?
No, the building's not coming, just, they're, they're gonna get rid of some of their dumpsters, and some of their porta potties and stuff is going away. They're gonna try to clean them up, bring them over there, is what the plan is, so.
And there'd be, you, you have a four bay building.
I have a five bay building, and they've got at least two of those bases.
And that's what they're all about, too.
Yeah.
It's a hostile building, it was a. So the trash containers and all that are gonna go behind it?
Yeah.
So you don't see it from the whole.
Can I show you something?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Be nice to have it, all right?
My opinion, you realize this was, uh, thank, see right there, is that building you look at there? That's gonna be their office, and there's a container, and there's a, another container, now on this side of the shop, we want containers. Basically, like, see that, versus a chain of containers with a bunch of stacks in it, the whole plant, the dumpster, we can see that all.
So what goes in the containers, for bodies and all that sort of? Oh.
Unless I ran it now, yeah, there. Because I have permission already on the previous session, we invented the command.
So the containers are stacked, and then there're gonna be room in between each container, or?
Probably, yeah.
Eighteen foot container or something.
Yeah, like input or something.
I have that, and then.
Yes.
It just becomes a wall.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna try to block it out of this.
Containers that access is on the end, so, right?
Yeah.
So, cause. So this base then is it containing?
Yeah, the, the long.
So there's gonna be.
And James did it.
That's something we're previously, we're allowed to do right now, right? On our current issue. We've got twenty containers, but we have five there now.
Is there any limit? Is there any limit, somebody up there, to the number of dumpsters, porta potties, all that kind of stuff?
Yeah. Three hundred and sixty feet of this. Eighty foot. Calculate.
That'd be enough to take care of the.
It's a football field.
And I, I just wanna make sure, because I met with Ed to kind of help him prepare for today. Want to make sure everybody understands, and correct me if I'm wrong, that he's using those containers in place of a fence, for the most part, to block.
Yep.
The view of, from the road, of the trash dumpsters, and the warlords, and the porta potties.
It'll break it, it's an eight by, eight foot tall by forty feet long.
Forty, okay.
And then, basically, you know, like, if I just put up a privacy fence and paint it beige, eight feet tall, that's probably.
So eight or two foot long. Yeah, I mean, they're using containers to separate Mexico and United States, so.
They're burying them. Yeah.
You're gonna, you're gonna put any fire, the tile up there, and type like this.
We don't have many of those. Many of them, we don't make contact with any fire.
Yeah. Okay, further questions?
Yep.
They don't, you say you're gonna pay them.
I couldn't.
You say you're gonna pay some.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and it's what, um. Is mine gonna be the, the college ones, make sure that they're kind of, when they went to the background, do all that?
Well, I mean, I don't really wanna start arguing backs right now, we'll be specialist here, a lot of people skip, but, like, the colors, it's, to me, I mean, I didn't ask you what do I do, paint at your house?
Well, what I'm just saying, we don't want to.
Yeah, I know, I know, I don't want to, but if we write that down, if you guys told me, say, okay, I wanna make a play, then you guys, then you guys start telling this, say, you gotta paint this house, that's where it all started, you know, the government.
No, we're not doing that.
No?
We just don't.
You're just gonna make special rules.
We don't want you to paint anything.
Okay.
It would be cool.
You write that down, and I won't paint nothing.
But you said, but you said earlier, before we started this conversation.
Yeah, they'll match the buildings, what I said.
So that's the building, so what are, are the building here?
It's great.
So, you have it.
Seasonally, yeah. No, I wouldn't mean to be confrontational, I just, I'm kind of big on that right now, where, where the government's going, and the government telling people what they can do. If you think about that, it, it, if, you know, I was gonna tell you what color you could paint to your house, you wouldn't like that either, so.
But they're playing, they're winning the show. Who has those ten containers? They're gonna do the same thing?
Yeah.
And have them string them on them, and paint them right, wood color, uh, earth tone.
Yeah.
I was looking for earth tones.
Yeah.
What would happen, you get potatoes all over the place?
Yeah.
It looks like a ten year old kid thing.
Yeah. Yeah, all the ones on site, they, they paint it with a professional sprayer, they spray them all beige, and they did that on the original set there.
Yeah, further questions?
Because we don't have a copy of the original SUP. Nowhere in here does it say anything about twenty meters or any other information on the original SUP, so I, I'd like to see that. So this is in our net.
Was the other one was for, uh.
Well, originally, I was strictly promoting property, when you did it the first time with Jackie. We did it, I gave her a list of things that would be possible to do on there. And I take commercial taxes on this property, just so that you guys all know that, that's my, that's my, my acre. It's, so, so it's basically its own commercial space, commercial, and then, yeah, normally, you don't have to ask permission on commercial property, for what you do on the. So, what you do on the.
May I ask some questions? All right, it says that you are to have a minimum of a million dollars liability insurance with the customer county name as a certificate holder. Is that still the effect?
They can't, yeah, they're no longer there, the people that you're asking about.
But this is an amendment to a, a current SUP and that is one of the conditions.
Yeah. Yeah, for sure.
Okay. Anything else that jumps out? You're allowed to sell this. It does say that they are fully painted and neutral color. So, that is already on here as a condition. It's not that. That's all I have.
Further questions?
Will they ask? I presume you have a copy of this.
Yeah.
Can I just get your original one here? It says maximum two six foot by four foot oversized signs.
Yeah. They're no longer there, they weren't the one.
I'm sorry.
They weren't with the lumber company and there will be no signs like that.
Okay. But it does say that they can have an SUP, but I wondered, is that what a lot of companies pay them by this to do the signs?
I'm fine with that, yeah. Because I didn't like that idea. That was kind of thrown from the yellow ones, I'm like. There aren't too many signs any bigger than what's allowed in the county there, you know?
Yes.
That's my opinion. It's a small county, everybody knows everybody and.
So, personally, with the stuff that you have there, is you, you've got a lot of equipment. Right away, that's not true, so. What, was that, did it move in any way, shape, or is that just?
No, I mean, I removed my stuff out there. Because I wanted to, I guess, but I can put that up on, kind of, property, all that stuff on my personal land. And I can have on the commercial place also, so. I mean, I, I just put it out there to kind of post up on my line, at least I did it. Just, yeah, I mentioned, you know, cleaning it up because, you know, one time it was, before they put the, uh, same San Isidro, you know, you had the lumber yard up there. Yeah.
It was fairly clean. It wasn't anything. But now it's not. It's spilt everywhere. I know you got my plane, you know, that up. There's all those logs that are, that are leaning that goes for lumber or, I'm not, like, the wood.
Yeah, no, that's my favorite part we've talked about there.
Well.
I'm just, I'm just.
Yeah, but we're, you're talking about, what I don't want, and wanna get really down to it, is three years ago, four years ago, that was not a valid property. Now, it's a junkyard. I have an issue with that on whether or not this is gonna turn into a junkyard. That's all I.
Well, you're talking about my personal property, when you're talking about us where the crews are, not even in this area that we're talking about.
I'm talking about an ice hole we dropped.
Well, I'm talking about the barrels up there, and I don't like to lay that much either, but if, you know what I mean?
I mean, you're, you're getting agitated.
Well, you're getting, you're talking about my private property. We're talking about a, a, another thing.
We're talking about, you can hear another SUP and something else that made three years look worse than what it does now.
Sure.
Okay, we're talking about independent five acres. Actually, containment in this personal. We're, we're mostly dealing with the five acres.
But, 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 let's just, let's point that out. Right now, the lumberyard which used to sit there is a building, still sitting there, I'm not saying that. That has a, a truck out, uh, had a car out in it and, well, what I saw.
The truck out in?
It has a car or Jeep or something out there and it's got a dealful engine. That's, that's the same place I saw the lumber.
Anybody see that?
What, do you?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with what you're talking about.
There.
Yeah.
God, I couldn't imagine this, how it's, you know, the board. And that's just.
Okay. So, we're dealing with.
Okay, I've, I've been offended about enough by him.
Okay.
I mean, I've had it with you.
That's enough.
You're talking about my personal stuff now. You want your personal, we're not saying. No, no, we're talking about the front stuff. And, and you can't get past it. I mean, you're making a personalizing accent on me.
That's enough. Any more comments from the panel? Skip. Carol. Mary.
We're gonna make a motion.
Okay.
I move that we recommend that the OCC approves the modification to the Lion's current SUP that's a lumberyard with a condition that removes the oversized sign allowance and all of the other conditions in the SUP are kept.
Second. Skip second. Further discussion.
Um, on this Lion's SUP modification page that we've got here, it says, uh, we've already discussed the need to keep the area free of blowing trash. That needs to be, I believe, that needs to be a condition of the SUP. That there be no blowing trash outside of their property. No, I, I, I think that I don't want there to be blowing trash. I mean, how are you gonna keep the blowing trash on the property? Because they've got containers and fences. Around that SUP, so you don't get blowing trash inside of that? No. As long as it doesn't affect their neighbors.
And I would invite them to ask land, uh, more than willing.
Oh, that's, that's my motion, so.
Okay, so it's been moved and saved for a good discussion.
Repeat the motion.
Can you repeat it or shall I try?
You shall repeat.
Okay. I said that we recommend to commissioners to approve the modification to the Lion's SUP that's currently a lumberyard excluding the oversized signs and retaining all of the existing conditions.
I want that, that it ceases to be a lumberyard, so, well, it ceases to be a lumberyard.
Do I need to put in there, what do I need to put in there?
Where it seems to be a lumberyard, because it's not. Lumberyard.
But the current SUP doesn't say it's lumberyard, it just says it's commercial property. It does. Okay, but it's mod, okay, modifying it from, I mean, we're a lumberyard to to a leased commercial property.
For the trash.
For open disposal. If it can, if it's something else, then we'll have to re-approve it.
That's, that's.
That's what you're looking for. Okay, I agree, then modify the the motion to say from a lumberyard to lease to open disposal.
The final two skip. Okay, further discussion.
Definition also says wholesale, it's several goods of large quantities. That's resold by a machine, retail. Retail, you're not gonna be doing it anymore.
Yeah, that's, that was probably put in there for my excavation size when I saw a tractor.
That wouldn't be happening.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll steer with.
Yeah, just leave it. Um, so, we're only changing the lumberyard to oak disposal. That's the only change, other than the signs.
Okay.
You're not allowed to amend that of blowing trash? Not if it's inside the real property, because you've got, that's, that's up to them.
I'm sorry, was your question about the trash?
The blowing trash?
And they do, in the very last page, you can address that, that they will monitor that.
I want it in the, in the, in the. SUP, but I don't have it. It's already in the SUP, that, right? Well, it's, I think it's on the patient, since we've already discussed the need to keep the area free. That's. Okay, may, may I ask what blowing trash means?
Well, Eric says, a lot will be monitored regularly to, in to ensure not. Loose trash is not scattered. And so that they have discussed with open disposal to keep the area free of blowing trash.
Okay, then I will amend my motion to agree with Carol that there is no blowing trash on the property.
Okay. Except yours under the Lion's SUP modification, disposal, it's got noise, dust, blowing trash, containers. And, and look, technical products, roll offs, dumpsters, all that.
So, is this page, help me here, Carol, this page of SUP modifications, does this become part of the document or is this just, this looks like it's informational to me?
It's really mainly informational.
It's informational, so this is not part of the, to the SUP. So, does the SUP modification need to include all this stuff?
Yes.
Noise, dust. So, I think that the motion for the approval of the SUP needs to state this stuff, otherwise this is just a talking point.
For every, everything listed under the Lion's SUP modification and have.
For open disposal.
I disagree because all of those are already listed under SUP as things are already, oh, wow. Noise, dust, all of those things are already.
They're already listed in the SUP.
They're, they're listed in the regulate, in, in the resolution.
Except for these.
Except for which?
Containers will retain the same colors as the original shop.
That's already actually part of the original SUP.
This, this bill allows the same colors as the shop. This is meant for the shop.
What if they keep the shop? I like neutral.
Well, that's back what color your batch.
I like, I like. You know, what's the second one?
I think that there are talking points, there's a. Because when you drive by, you're supposed to have, you see a lot of things, there are more questions, and I'm like, how are you gonna keep that contained? And he mentioned that they were gonna reduce the number of roll offs, dumpsters, and. So, we're very worried they have that. So, we listed that in our, that needs to be part of the.
I think that as long as they're within that enclosed area, which they have to be for the SUP were, in my opinion, were good. I, relisting all of those things, in my opinion, is redundant to the motion. But if you want somebody else one, just do a different motion, that's fine.
Okay. Any more discussion? Remove it.
Is this piece of paper going in with the SUP?
No.
No, it's not.
Oh, you want it.
No, no, I don't.
Any, any further discussion? Let's skip.
Well, yes, I think, uh, we covered the situation. That's a good job. They're not really following the rules.
Carol.
I'm sorry, I need to pause for a minute. Is the trash in the motion now? Is it just on this truck? It's, you know, the trash is in the motion? As what you said. I vote yes. With the caveat that this be monitored, I'm concerned that this not end up looking like.
Very.
I vote yes. I like oak having this, a new home and it'll be less unsightly than it is now.
There. Well, yes, I do not believe in. I hate it, I don't like it. The only thing I'm seeing on here is, what I'm worried about this town is, you know, like, a lot of towns that I've seen were just, it's out there. It's not that it all trust you, it's just, it's sometimes you have to put things in place, so five years, ten years down the road, you can come back to documents, like, literally, you said. That's all the reason. But they need to do a good job, Ed. I'm not, after that, I'm not trying to tell the people, you're gonna fly, oh, yes. I just believe that, that you're, you're gonna put some houses out there and you want, you're, you're gonna get better people, you're gonna get better rents, you're gonna get everything else if they're not proud about that. Buy something that just blow, that's purposeful, okay? So, that's where I'm coming.
Okay, I, I vote, I will vote yes, we can, we can get there. I think with the conditions that, that are on there, the new conditions that we can put on you know, in addition to the community, and it's something that is needed at the present time. What should carries?
I would just like to comment for that. The only thing, like, I type it here for, like, ladies and gentlemen, both the comment as a member, we all have been there. And it's, you know, it's offensive when people are coming, I mean, that's what certain people do. And, I mean, you guys have been here since the beginning of time, haven't you? So.
That might be intense.
No, I mean, I mean, they're, they're locals, they've been here and they're, they're okay with that. That's part of, you know, affluence in neighborhood is that, that type of thing. We don't wanna be downtown Dallas, you know, in my opinion, I don't either. Okay, well, I'm just, I was clarifying what you said, and I'm, I'm not trying to be offensive. Yeah, I'm just letting you know why I take offense.
But it's hard unless, unless you see a diagram or something, it's just, you know, here's my private property and here's what I'm trying to do. I'm gonna look and see. And that, if you gotta give that. If we went out there and banned it all out, we would, I believe, it makes sense, but it's all just common with it.
Okay, well, I apologize, I'm.
Pete and I are, and, uh, how much, how many acres does he have? And how much is designated privately to call it?
Yeah.
And how much is?
On just the trash part?
I don't know how much land you have.
We have three, three.
Yeah, like, five, so I have to put cherries in that one where it's four or five acres.
It's commercial.
And then, I, I, it's commercial. Um, five, it's on my driving, I have to put cherries in that one right here. But it's only, it's that front little silver there, because we just mapped that one.
We're the new shop.
Yeah, whereas we don't go across the road on that one, it's a commercial, it's very normal. The commercial don't.
In, in defensive, and, you know, the wind, I don't really want the trash to go over on us or the dust or anything else. But, let's face it, uh, with the winds we've had here already, I've got an Ortega taco package in my, where I walk every morning. And I certainly didn't eat it and throw it out there with the hell. But, you know, I mean, I.
An eight, an eight foot barrier is gonna stop some of them.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not gonna stop all of it.
If Ed, if Ed sees that there's a whole crap load of it over there, I'm sure you're over and taking it out. If Ed, if Ed sees that there's a whole crap load of it over there, I'm sure you're over taking that for what?
It'll stop your rotation of the taco.
Yeah. And, and we got, you know, I had Tommy Walker this week, you know, and a lot of crashes that we got playing for. Come off that way, it was an old county crash pit out there or something, we were constantly picking it up out there. And we picked it up out of the other side of the road, and it was just a kind of calm down.
Okay. We, we're probably out of business.
Sorry.
Go to what started down this whole business.
For A? The whole business is ruling out. Um, that was a first. Mr. Stidler approved that on. On, on A fifth? Yes. The, um, snack cracker was approved on the fifth, right? And name was this on the fourth. On the fourth, yes. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so now we're down to the continuation of plans, special use for a portable housing. Of commercial. Now we have two. Yeah. Again.
Oh, we brought you some in math, kind of to be more fair while we're going to the jury. You have questions on?
Okay.
Okay.
It would like to be able to offer a portable housing, creating a high-end, high-performance apartment. Safe and destroyable. That being said, it will not be so affordable that we'll open the doors to attract trouble. You can purchase your manufacturer's homes and lease them out. Or if an individual wants to bring in their own manufacturer phone, they can lease it off. And they hope that they will be able to use somewhere out there. Get that side door out there. That will get everybody in the tent except for Carol.
And I did go out there to, you know, last week, so I had the advantage of you being there to tell us, but she repeated it. I tried. But she, yeah, yeah, so I.
Got some rules in here. So. The planning one for the, yeah. Community-centric system.
Yeah, we all engineer it. There'd be multiple ones, but yeah.
Yes. Water wells. With the, I don't do. Water wells. That's the commercial.
Yeah. On that one, yeah, this. And we, we can halt, if we needed more water, we can buy it from town, take portable containers, because we're going to have a system of our own water system. So I'm not depending on a well out in that district, supporting the entire place. I, I tried to buy it from around the mountain, which I tried to see if I could run a pipeline from town. They shot it down and said they didn't have enough pressure on this in the town to support that. And, so.
The other question, first of all, the large, it's a long bit of that, so that probably would be through upper, upper arc. And, and I did have an update from upper arc. They said that you couldn't, they couldn't get to you until they finished making these calls.
Yeah. So, so we're ways out. But yeah, see, that's why I was going to start with a little well, the small well. Did, did you talk about that with them?
Well.
A third of an acre foot.
Right, you could be, yeah, being the incentive to work it out. Or you're. Really make your foot, not that far.
How many key?
One house.
One house.
That's right.
How much?
How many?
I'm probably out of luck here. How many units are you going to put in?
Yeah, let me make sure I can answer you on the poll.
Go ahead.
I, uh, we're, we're going to build it as what the community generally, what we're proposing to do is to expand it, like, if the community wants to. And we all know what the community wants to do, we're going to bring that.
Okay.
We, we got up to like, I think we asked for twenty-two originally sites, and then there's other lots on there that's going to be like for. Um, spacing gaps for different things, is one of them, like in two places, a single box or. There, there's some extra spaces in there, but it's for line adjustments for the houses, because there'll be different applications going on. But there's up to twenty-two out there.
Okay, and then, then, okay, I got the twenty-two. So you're going to do one commercial well to suit the needs of all twenty-two theoretically?
It will, unless it gets, unless it gets above.
Well, let's say that you had Todd come up there drilling, and you only got, uh, seven gallons a minute. It won't, it won't happen. So then.
But I, I mentioned that earlier, we've got a potable three thousand down, all that system, systems around the oil, all, all of that.
Can I ask Ed something?
Yes.
What's that? What, what's the problem, it looks like with the wall? How does all of those problems begin to work with tall, 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 when we enter a house?
Um. Because it's affordable.
In whose eyes, Ed? What, what is affordable, Howard?
I, I was, we got on the, the previous meeting, we were talking like, like a two to three bedroom, being eight hundred dollars a month is what we're going to shoot for.
With marginal water, if any.
Well, I, I guess I don't understand, because the well in town is full of water, and they call it up there all day long.
Well, there was a time when you could. What's it called?
Huh? What is it, is it three cents per gallon in town?
Three and a half gallons. In O two, Treadco shut that down and couldn't. Couldn't want to be water out of there.
So, so I mean, it, it, in some fashion, he's going to have to spill water for those copies.
I'm not depending on.
I mean, he's either going to have all the water, or he's going to have to, permission from the state. To pump that well more than a quarter of a foot per year. That quarter of a foot per year will be metered.
Will be what?
Metered, it will be metered. I mean, they will keep record around, so he can't pump more than a quarter of a foot. Out of that exempt commercial well.
No, speak to the cows again. Yeah, and, and then like, there are things, we're not building all of the ones, we're not going in there and putting twenty-three moons in, we're not, we're going to start with two. And see if we're, we're going to buy two grand wells and start with two. And even set out there and see how we work, and if we're, if we're, if we don't, we won't be all that we want, I would make up.
You're not going to make a trailer park out of that area.
That's where, I mean, what do you consider?
Well, we, we got two in town, that's.
We got three in town.
Do we have three in?
John, come with the.
Yeah, and, and that's my question, are you going to make it a trailer?
Some of them. So, I mean, I'm not going to that theme, basically, that's not what I'm trying to do. What I'm trying to do is so we can, when we live in the east, yeah, so maybe a foot can afford to live up there, so it ain't two hours away to the burger. And that's the reason why I'm going, there ain't, there's not much money on that side of the road down. I won't make a lot, by the time I get power over there, it's going to cost me a hundred thousand dollars a year. Just, well, you know, you're, you're subjugating a lot of ground, so you know where the power is, but it's ridiculous. But that's why I'm going to do the part, part B of that is to. All the costs, you know, because, like I say, affordable, to make that affordable, if I put all my money that I put into water and I put into power here over there. And like you say, it would not be affordable. Well, with me doing the other part, that helps make it affordable.
What's the other part on the, we'll get there, oh.
At the last meeting, you were talking about the, either good homes or it will be a hog. So, I mean, we had some idea.
Yeah, there's pictures in the book, there's some of the.
So like a double wide or a.
But I'm going to start with two single wides too, the, new single wides. Get yourself to share my book with the audience, we have two, this single wide is low basing.
I have a question for you. If, this is a mobile home park. There are sticker regulations for mobile home parks over there. You know, it's all right, it's the same.
I think.
I do not know. Well, aware of that. Are you, uh, so, and we have a lot of point out there, they're, they're asking. I spent some time researching that. He did mention on our site, George Wartier, that he would be over and above the requirements available. And does the state want to have that or a weed tax?
State. Dorothy's office when pulling building from it, each one of these will have a building permit, just like a normal house, everything will be. So it'll go through them and then they have all the state regulations, so they monitor what I do because every time I send one of these, I gotta go to Dorothy's office. I gotta present them with what I'm putting in there, you know, heights, that, we all, but, kind of standards.
Now, there are actually state regulations for mobile home parks, you have to register it, it won't be Dorothy's office in state.
No, because a mobile home, it is Dorothy's office, there is a state license that you have to have.
Whole thing.
And the information's in your books or out there.
No, we didn't put it in.
Oh, you guys didn't?
We didn't.
Oh, we're going to put it in.
Wait.
We have all the state licenses in that place. We just wait, you know, if you guys just say no, there ain't no sense in making all the license, but we do have it all in place to get that one. But they, they do not really regulate, because. Um, what they do is they call and ask if there's any changes every year, just right now, once changed our premier, but there is a. What is it?
An annual.
Yeah, it's an annual thing. They're not really a real reason why, you know, they don't come out.
Well, those ones that I brought in. No, it wasn't in the presentation. So we didn't have, talk it up.
Remember, you had one?
Give me a minute to rethink. It, it was, she wanted to know about the commercial side of it, I told her when we get here.
Okay. Yeah, we, we, we got to split it up, so it's actually two separate items. Housing is one side. And commercials, something else. They're tied together, but they're actually two separate projects.
Says here that the provision of housing regulates overseeing the Mobile Home Act, Art Act, and Mobile Home Parks, Key Resolution, reinforcing program. It's outside of our jurisdiction.
Agreed.
That always, that overshadows, as I stated.
But it still requires a building permit through your town.
Yes. So.
Yeah. Oh. Sure.
Can I ask Ed something?
Yes.
Can I turn around and talk to you? We can put a bathroom, it's still a way along.
What's that, on your, uh, your, how did he get it off? Is there going to be one road that enters that, or are you going to have a driveway at every house?
No, there's, there's going to be four entrances, just for more, more just for, like, if everybody's wanting to work at eight o'clock in the morning. Because I find when people live there, they're working for a living.
For safety.
So, there's going to be four entrances, just so it's not really congested, because, you know, most jobs start around the same time and around the same times. We were, we, we were going to do two when I originally did the site, those are the trees people, we're talking about two entrances, one in, one out. And so it would be more convenient, you know, on flat ground, you could go across the thing, but we're going to zero skate, it's a great, you know, watering.
So how many acres of the, of your forty acres is this going to take in?
That will take in. What?
Seven, six point nine.
Yeah, six point nine to seven, we have a survey once we get everything, it's basically what you see there, we're going to have it inserted once we get it.
To make it, Roden, Roden, Roger, pressure, I already had that.
Just kind of in that little triangle. Between your fence and the road.
So that first triangle where that wise off, like you're going up to your house, and then it goes two forty-one or whatever that is? It's right, right in that point, it's on the north end.
Sound of which one?
The next one.
Going to the west.
The one, he guys just bought one from Bel Air, I got the other one.
Yeah.
It's on there, so.
So then, the, the, now I'm going back to the other deal, so the disposal deal is on point.
It's all, it's now a point, you know that new building I just built?
Um.
Yeah, that one for Roger. The new building we just built, it's two of those ways, and then behind it will be their area, and we're going to box it.
This is farther down the.
Just further north, from that point where that comes in.
Are you going to build a bench around this?
I'm, I'm really undecided on that, I, I haven't been swayed either way, I don't know.
Yeah, see if you have a wood.
Yeah, I'm going to start with a couple, I'm going to pay off fence for privacy, I was going to talk to the county and see if I can help pay some dust impression on through that area, keep the dust out. I'd like to leave it on for the views, for the both, it will have some recent views up above the other side, you know, so.
What about the house?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Five area friends out there, somewhere.
We hold up the gravy drive to the B N R. And on the corner.
Yeah.
But there's a dirt fence on the, on the east side.
Well, I don't think they're, they're fence line. So, how do you get in there?
Well, I mean, I'm just thinking even, maybe in there, we rub it on the corners.
Yeah, yeah, no, we, we will do some, whatever's required, but make it work, because, I mean, I ain't going to complain, you guys have these things, that's a lot. No, I will, I'll take care of whatever we need to do, but, I don't know. I never thought about the town, I think, bringing that up there and reboots the fencing and catalog now, this is true.
What's that? Or the south name, that part, for the, for the housing, it gets narrow?
It's wider.
Can I?
We get wider, on south, you know, you're.
South and.
Yeah, south and.
Pretty narrow.
Yeah.
How much of that are you going to be able to use? What would be the setback compared to base fence and the road?
Fifty, 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 fifty feet is my setback, probably more than that, the county requirements fifty feet. And we got more than that for that. I, I can show you on the map when we all done.
Questions? Are you with that?
Yeah.
From the property.
He should talk about him would be, Jeremy Westline. Okay. Jeremy's got.
Right.
I thought you said you were not.
The sandbox.
No, we're not.
Boy.
That's what he's talking about.
Jeremy's West.
Jeremy's West of that, that's. We own that too.
Three horses, though.
I think she's thinking of doing that one.
Twenty horses, eighty years.
Don't explain that.
Oh, hell.
That okay? Yeah. Okay, she got you.
This'll, this'll help.
Yeah, no, I didn't have a plan.
So, this right here is their previous property, okay?
Mm-hmm.
The right here where the, his excavating business is, okay? This right here is the land they bought, okay? So, this right here, where the county could split their property with that road. This is where the planned housing unit is gonna be, and then this is the other S U P they replied for. So this is y'all's over here, and then this is where the property line was created. So the county put a road between their properties. So this right here is that six point nine. So that's there, so on, on the east side of that county road. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Does that help?
He's talking about that little slipper, he hasn't found the nod.
So nothing in the. No, not in this part, I mean, he's.
There's one down here.
Yeah, so this is all this square right here, so that sounds, that's. Does that help?
Yeah.
I mean, this is where the horses are.
I've, I've seen.
Okay, I understand.
So, as, as we go, we're gonna, like, there's, like, the line on the curators, but you see there? I'm, I'm skipping over this block of the first floor, it's in that one hour, the first floor, it costs. I'm not giving you. None of the need. We can, we can. We need.
We have. There's. See it a little bit now. See it like.
No, it, it, I have. Yes, it's, it's.
No, I didn't think about that, I'm glad. We will, yeah, we'll pencil it out.
Yeah, four, I'm sorry.
We have two more. Yeah, we might drop back to two, keep the finance. I'm sorry, we're back. We got business over here, I'm sorry.
I, I think we're good.
We're good.
I think so.
Well, we're not good, are we gonna have a discussion about that? Can we get in a question?
I think we're good with a little comment, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay, that's all right.
I think I'm gonna.
Okay. Is there any further?
We got a couple of questions to answer. Because of how far it goes, what comes up?
Yeah.
Well then.
Here's this, I'm not.
And then I'm gonna go.
Thanks, Jim, you can stay.
We're here, but you push aside. Book it, all right?
If you guys would like to meet after this, I'd be more happy to just say my thank you, but I don't. Yes. I'm tired. I don't. I don't want to. I understand that it's already. That's for a lot of trips.
Is it, is, is, what it's got is, is it used to be piece that bad?
Yeah, well, you had, it needs to be part of that pasture.
Yeah. The piece that they, and then they just. Part of the park, yeah. We have, we have a grazing noise to that forty-eight.
And.
I could not remember.
And then all the lots are for sale, right? So, you know, you sell them all, everything all the time. So. Just clarify. Good. Cause that's all part of that subdivision, I was pointing out, that thirty-five acres, it goes behind that top one. Was it like eight on, twenty on that, eight on?
Um, fifteen, twenty.
I paid on my side of the. Thank you, that's right, something like that, I. Seen the last one.
Let us know when we can ask questions.
You can.
We ask questions, okay. So, so the trailer part portion of this is all these little lots here, and they are.
Let's go to this one.
That's a great idea.
Thanks, Skip, I appreciate it. Yeah. This is a typical detail of each model's trailer on it, is what's in this lower right hand corner, you guys see that?
Yeah.
That shows you break up the lot versus the ground kind of roughly. And, just like everybody else right now, you get this in real well, I don't want the trailers on one side of the lot that they did for down, like, be twenty-four yards in between them. So, we got this last minute, for you guys to break it, so this here, that's represented.
So these lots are how wide each?
Uh, approximately forty by two hundred and forty.
And this area is what you said, six point nine acres, this, this piece here, not that.
Yeah.
This is six point nine.
And this is the area. Is it okay if I stand at this one?
Yeah. They're over there, oh, just one, both areas.
Access.
They're right here.
So what was it?
Last trailer.
I saw them on the tour.
Yeah, the tour, they're standing right up here. Oh, for support.
So yeah, seven acres of ground where mobile homes are. Right?
Yeah. There's. We have that work. We have that work.
I would be great to. No, oak, oak is a lot. Give or give or home disposal.
It's about the belly button here.
And. And you don't think that, that getting more home disposal is going to?
I hope that we can bring them up to standard.
Set the tone for who's gonna live here? What's, this is gonna look like?
Well, they, they built two subdivisions around where the disposal was right now, old disposal was there before, either one of those subdivisions. And all those five hundred thousand of our homes, look all the way around. So maybe easier or what?
That's gonna be. A problem of economics. Of convenience to come in. I mean, he want, I won't start doing these out of, down here.
Yeah, it wouldn't, for costing hours, hundred thousand dollars. You can imagine what's gonna cost you.
So you're gonna start on this?
I'm a third of that. You build that all.
Okay. I've got, I've got several things in the application here that I. Um, are you gonna have an application or something for tenants?
Yep.
Are you gonna inspect their houses? I would, like, approve their houses before anything else?
I mean, that's a little short term, you know, stuff, I'm gonna make sure all the bases, the home requirements, and house.
Yeah.
No, I mean, it's not really, I, I don't know if you have those stuff on, I don't, for a lot, I don't do my house.
I'm gonna do, no, I don't have that.
Hey, um. Here's a room, part of them, we had another page, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got all that stuff, okay, so we are not going to regulate the houses.
Yeah.
They wanna, I wanna move my house in. Do you care what we're like?
I do.
Do you have a rule in that? Where I go?
I, I just mentioned the second one, in a trailer, it's like doing that. It's, it's a monster, I want to have, in that case, we can just do it. So, say. Thanks, Skip, was just gonna be down there. And he had his own trailer already, and he would like a place to put it, there's a max trailer, I would say yes, would be available, but.
My trailer, so can people put fish wheels in here?
Hmm.
No. No, all. This, this, please.
Okay, so it's gotta be, uh. Um, I've got, I've got. They don't say anything in here about units being skirted.
Yeah, right here. It's in there.
And that is one of the.
Yeah, sorry. Single and double wide month.
They have no rules, but, but, when I say, I didn't mean, they got rules, but they don't really, of course, and they don't come out, good inspections, they don't do any of that stuff.
Yeah.
Just, because I feel.
So it's not a single wide against a double wide, is that two lots? They would, they.
That's what I'm saying, we've got more than twenty-two lots in here. And that is for like a double wide, or somebody wanted to do a triple wide, or, then, you know, this is next available, they call it a four wide, but I don't think it's next available.
So you're gonna try to not rent lots, you're gonna try to own?
I'm gonna try to own, own, that way I can go a little better. But, I mean, I just didn't want the option of you, you know, then I have to come back here, if somebody says, like, skip a lot of modular. And he wanna pull it in there and go in that modular, there would be no reason to bother with it. But I would have to come in and ask you guys permission to do it again, and I didn't put that down. There's less money in it. But if I'm having utilities run, but they got a lot.
Wouldn't that need a new permit, even though you're, somebody else is bringing you on, it's still a permit, right? Yes, okay, good.
But then I would have to bring it for the forty.
Right. You got an office.
You don't care if I sit down? No?
Is that a acre?
No, 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 we're acres, it's forty by two forty. Uh, what's the, what is it, it's per acre roughly?
It's ten thousand, three hundred and ten thousand.
So, quarter acre.
And what's that? What's your intention, John, of the value for that forty acre?
That's coming in our next part of this one, and we'll get it out in like, um, three or five. It, it's coming up in about ten minutes. Is that okay?
Yeah. I've got a problem with the age range of modules, nineteen ninety to twenty twenty-three.
Sure.
Nineteen ninety, that's a thirty-three year old. Single wide.
I'm fifty-two.
I know. I'm sixty-six, and I know what I like, and I don't want to have a module, seriously, that's all.
Can you tell me which one is which? Which one is the nineteen ninety?
Maintenance wise and stuff, from your picture, no, I can't. Maintenance wise, I'm a, I'm a retired real estate freezer, I know things like the maintenance for years old.
Yeah.
Um, maintenance wise and stuff, it's gonna look. I guess.
We'll have.
Those are, anyway, you, you just. State it, they look like, that'll be sent over.
I. Are you a girl?
What? I am. I am.
Yeah, you're the witness. I do not, I do not agree with thirty-three year old single wide module homes being in there.
So, then you're gonna make the county a rule, rule on that nobody can bring one in, it's a nineteen ninety investor count? That's my point, is why, why do you guys, why does one make lose more on me than anybody else in town?
But, you do have a little.
Yep.
There's a rule, but it's like, waiting thirty days.
Yeah.
Sure.
It's.
So why don't you guys upgrade that rule, remember, we didn't have that conversation, you know, that.
Okay, look at that.
I, I know, that, that's one.
Good suggestion.
Well, because if you make a rule for me, then what's to say they'll make that on the next edition?
Well, cause I think there's a difference between one guy bringing in a, let's say, twenty-five year old. Single wide and putting it on a five acre lot.
Yeah.
And you lining up twenty-two of them, I think that looks real good.
Well, there's a nineteen sixty-seven, that involves, that was brought in three years ago.
I don't know if you can fix what's been done in the past, I'm trying to fix what's gonna be done in the future.
I'm with you, yeah, I mean. It, you guys, that's what I was saying in the last meeting, we, we put all the rules on you guys want, if you tell me the rules, I don't want your, I. Ideally, that ain't what I want. But if we can't maintain affordable, which should be an option there, you know what I mean? I don't. You know, the city's looking, it's time to make affordable housing up there, there's been all kinds of things. Trying to go for affordable housing, and I think I can get it done. But, I mean, that's up to you.
I don't disagree with your concept, I'm not on the attainable housing board.
Yeah.
So, I put in lots of numbers towards that goal.
True.
What it looks like is a concern to me. And, like you said, one, one older single wide, some guys five acre lot, looks, I'm gonna repeat my job, looks way different. And twenty-two of them lined up facing back at the local credit.
Yeah.
Which is nice, it's not, there is a difference.
Yes.
That was one of my questions to Ed, cause I didn't wanna see it look trashy either. And the one thing that he sold me on was that they all have the pitch drift, and they look almost identical. So, I guess some of it, we would have to leave up to his discretion as to whether it's the up. And run down, um, I think some of them can look fairly nice, um. It depends on the situation.
Right, but we're not, he's saying that he wants to buy them, not lease them ideally. And if they leave some, he's not really gonna pay much attention to what they look like. And if he's gonna buy them, then there's nothing to say that he's not gonna buy the first two new and go, whoa, that didn't work financially for me. I'm gonna start looking for old ones to make this numbers look. So I think we're giving in illegally here, that I'm not comfortable with.
I would just say this, but if you go too far. Or just bottom side of that.
Yeah.
It's gonna hurt, it, it's gonna hurt financially that way, too. And we, we're not really dealing with his finances.
Right, that's our, yeah.
That's not our, that's not our thing.
No.
My intentions is not gonna be as similar if I ask, answer to your question.
Intentions are good.
Yeah.
I'd like, I would like it to be in writing that we cannot accept. Units of soul.
What's the oldest year yours is?
One thing about it is that sort of time date, five years, it's on the date, if you say, okay, two thousand on up. Five years, it's now past that twenty-five year long.
So we, so, so we put, so we put, you know, no units older than. I was.
And then you stand out to the whole county, right? You're gonna work this time out to the whole town.
I don't want twenty-two.
I don't either.
Old mobile homes lined up on seven acres gravel. Okay, other, I'm gonna.
You depict it really nice, though.
There's nothing we can pick about something that got passed in seventy-one, so that's a grand over there. The only thing she tried to say, what we can do is what the future, that's the only thing we have to do something about. If we could go back in the past, correct what happened in seventy-one, there'd be a lot of issues.
Yeah.
It's just, we don't wanna repeat some issues we got to deal with here, that, that's.
Yeah.
Is there any further discussion? Um, I'd like to see. Cause you're putting in zero escape, which is good, I'm thinking you do get weeds in that. So you got two foot weed out there, or. What we used to do is if, if, if our houses, if you went by there, and there was something over twelve inch, we had to write, as an owner, to come in. Mow it, charge a ten, ten, thirty dollars. It's just, it, it keeps our property good for anybody else who did come in, it helps our rents, all that kind of stuff, but it might be something to do with the rules of the relationship. You don't have to enforce it, it's, it's, it's there if you want to.
I think, I think to start with, we'll try to help them with the maintenance, keep the weed sprayed down, and, you know, try to, try to get a good. Good product out there, you know, like I said, I don't wanna. Start off being a small owner anymore.
I just don't want you saying, you as an owner, you spray it up, wrap it up.
Yeah, no. Yeah.
These are poison, yeah, poisoner all, now you're really.
Yeah, there, we, we got a person we use on our gravel pits that spray weed. So we would use to do that. And I think the county uses the same person we use to do the county spraying.
My other question, when you did get, say, you get all twenty-two lots, how many systems do you say you want to do?
System?
Systems, for the, or you're gonna, you said you were gonna put systems in for water?
Yeah.
How many systems do you?
With all twenty-two, I'm, I'm hoping by then I can get some water, you know, I'm hoping our water system, sources from the town gets approved before I get too far. And then I can tie in the water, so. And then I can tie into the water, so it's moving down.
But if it doesn't happen, which as we see is taking a little.
Then, then he's down. Open up for our.
Yeah, they. And we got enough water, I mean, it's like, like I said, I'm not building from all twenty two a day, so I'm, I'm, I'm gonna start with, you know, it seems like a good deal. And if the county don't want this, I am not opposed to not doing this.
The way I see it, the major problem is, he's got to supply the water for those, for where they were growing these guys. That's gonna be too many, is major option.
And I, I'm, like you said earlier, I'm leader and controlled by the state, all, all these aspects we're discussing. I am controlled by the state, the county, there's, there's tons of rules on there, if we wanna make more, I don't mind putting more rules, I didn't mean to be rude here. I'm trying to be brave myself, and it's, it seems like you're being, you know, when you're in this position, it seems like people are attacking you, this ain't what I like to do for a little, and I like to be there.
Yeah, it puts us through a hard place, how to ask you part of the question.
Yeah, oh, I'm sure.
No, there's no, we're just, I'm just trying, we're just trying to look ahead.
No, I second her, I, it seemed like I offended you a little bit, I really did. And you should do.
You're gonna have to abide by all the rec, rules and regulations of the state. Water remisher.
Here's the hot thing, if you get five trailers. It's not proven, and I know this is not gonna happen, it's not proven by, you're not making. The term investment is terrible. You just going, Robert. Because you already got the other block, anything else? Robert, you got the whole thing ready, right?
I'm not gonna build out the entire thing, but I'll probably do enough for four, like we mentioned in the walk through there. So I'll probably save it out for, or do for, see how it goes, leave the rest of it, and progress down the line. I, I don't see any reason to go in and knock out a spot for twenty two or personally. It's, it's counterproductive, like I said, if it don't work out, with the first two, I'll know with the first two, I probably won't get to four. This is just an option, I thought my husband, husband people have a place to stay.
You got about five phases, is what you're kinda saying.
And I mean, it, it could go faster if there is a, a need for it, by all means, I'll bring more in, but if it's slower on, or whatever, you know, we'll, we'll grow with it.
Okay, for, for the discussion, for the.
Are these documents gonna be part of this permit? Please, all these rules and regulations, will these all be part of it, so that when we look for the ones?
Well, it seems like otherwise, five years from now, we don't know what we're due. I think that these two pages, if the issue is approved, these two pages need to be part of.
I would say there do need to be some modifications then, because apparently it says underwater that commercial, commercial wells will be run to each module. Obviously, that's not gonna happen, so I think that if you included the, there might be the added.
Wanna do, totally do away with that one, because over here it says water will be provided with water.
There you go.
I need to provide the water.
So you would stretch that, that needs to be, so maybe we need to go through each one. I know you had the proper carol of the nineteen ninety. Is there something that you would propose, or can we just say per the resolution?
No, I would largely say, might, might anyone be that, no, no homes over the ten years old.
If he, if he sets one to date.
That's all it.
And.
I would think twenty years. Two thousand, they started like better.
There's a comment.
If you say it can't be over than ten years. Okay, it's a. It's a two thousand thirteen today. Tomorrow, that, I won't let you put up some two, that's a two thousand thirteen, it's not illegal.
No, going in, going in place, when it's placed, then it will be. And maybe Dero's got a point.
Well, that's unfair, I mean, it's, it's really hard, they'd be saying, if he's gonna build portable complexes, then none of the units can be passed ten years, so that's. That's not the fee to board.
No, I'm saying, when, when it clicks in. When it goes in, it's gonna get older and older and older when it's there, I'm not saying you gotta take anything out, because it's fifty years old, if this works, if it's fifty years old, then that's fine. But I don't want it to be thirty three years old when it's going in.
There's a public question.
I'd say you cover what I was gonna ask. I'd say just about now, maybe in the trailers and talent.
Yeah, no, I understand, it's gonna get older, but let's not start, let's not start from three years old.
I don't think twenty years is too bad, I have a twenty three, two thousand on that.
How about a proposal for that?
Yeah, what are your thoughts?
You guys wanna meet in the middle of like twenty five? I mean, I don't want everyone, I, I told you to start out, I'm gonna put in two brand new, that's where I'm gonna head with it. But, you know, then you're gonna have to convince all these businesses to pay these people more. For support rent, if we're gonna put all new trailer there. You know what I mean, you're gonna have to really dress up, Tom, flip things like, well, they can want money so they can afford to live up there. You're gonna, you know what I mean, everybody's gonna start tipping better, everyone on.
Twenty, twenty, two thousand generally costs. And I know, I had a guy that had six hundred of them, the favorite, and he was getting something seven thousand, and he took a mortgage.
I can get that brand new single wide in there for about eighty thousand dollars, I've got a dealer to it, you know. That, that's a brand new one, that's what I'm gonna pay for the first two, you know. Yeah, I use.
They appreciate.
Yeah, I mean, probably thirty thousand, then by the time you move, they're not really, they don't appreciate super fast out here. Because there's, I mean, you know, Midwest where the mold and stuff gets thrown like it does, and they, they don't fall apart as fast as they do in other places. Moisture, if you go like, say, Oklahoma for instance, getting anywhere around Grand Light and all the old trailers out there. The mold is just, I mean, the trailers are falling apart completely.
But the old ones, I think two by, wasn't built, two by was long.
I plan on always having two by sixes, and back in the nineteen nineties had two by sixes. If you bought the right one, and that's what I wanna buy, I'm not. You know, I, I honestly don't wanna be that, but. If, if it's a nice tip, I find a good deal on a trailer, and it's super nice. And I think, well, this family couldn't actually afford to rent this, because you know, my rent price has to be based on what I, I, I put in rent for it. You know, everybody come to town, bought all the lots in town. Everything up in town, for, you know, hundred, hundred thousand dollar houses everywhere, you can't touch a house in town for her, so our kids have no place to go. Or, you know, our workers have no place, you know, I got, I got a kid that works for me, makes. Twenty two bucks an hour probably. And he just bought a three hundred and eighty four thousand dollar home. How is he gonna afford that? I helped him with the down payment, just so he could get something to cover his own. But how, how are you gonna sustain that up here, you know what I mean? That's my point, whenever it comes to low income housing, they built tons of them in Silverfoot, and it's twenty four hundred dollars a month rent. That, that's nowhere near low income, if you ask me, because I, I've got a lot of employees, like they are, my kids all look at blah, 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 and. Different places to afford, we have, have a house, and that's kinda where this is going, is there's certain people that do wanna stay up here, and they wanna join the workforce up here. But there's nothing available for them, so they have to move away.
Yeah, that was my first pick, I forgot silver right now. Everything, I mean, when I'm at six, when I'm at three point nine nine percent, my cause, I'm so. So I hear what you're saying, it's harder, it's facing this too.
Going back, you, you proposed twenty five, you said twenty three or two, I said ten.
Oh, are you gonna rent these, so do you, have you done the math on it, or can you buy the eighty thousand dollar new unit and rent it for eight hundred dollars, you know?
I said eight to nine, but yeah.
So that works, that you should be moving.
Just going off, I thought, yeah, I'm gonna try it, so, which if I have to grow up, I'm really trying. Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna run it out of here to your lease, you know, that way, I have some control, because I don't know if you're, you know, you're talking about all these rules and regulations with renters, because renters have all the rules, you know, they make the rules now. The government just, you know, and stipulate what you can do to renters, what you can do to say for, how many times you revisit their house. There's a lot of new rules coming up, and called out, it's really against rental houses, so.
Well, I think, I can. I can propose that we change that wording to no units over than twenty years old will be purchased.
No older than twenty years when placed?
Well, this, this says purchase, so.
I know. All right, I mean, you could put twenty.
Would, would you like to help subsidize the rental loans? I mean, would you like to, would you like to put your money there where it is with the investments, I mean. If, if you're concerned about the trailer, maybe you could come out personally and look at each one before I sell them, I would invite you. I would, I would extend that to you. Can you write that, and then you could come out and inspect each one?
No, we're not getting anywhere with that. Now, was that, was that in the list here, or was that?
That's the first thing in the list, that's on the single and double wide module, so.
If I go into a property here, I buy a C, a C property, that's a twenty five, thirty year old property. We're gonna have to renovate it. I'm saying my cause now. In doing that, now I have to look at all my calls, that I gotta get returned over shorter time. And Dallas, I lived that five, seven years up here, I've lived fifteen to twenty years. And so what we're doing is we'll put. And inconvenience is business on there. And, you know, to stay, just give it in five years, gives them a little bit, now, we, we could stipulate that they need to be. Look like the pictures or something like that, given that opportunity to give, but, but like I said, somebody may take care of their cars, a twenty five year old car, and a five year old car. Same name with trailers. They, some people be grabbing the trailers, some people don't. So, I mean, we have to give the opportunity, at least give them a tiny frame. Because, you know, somebody shows up with a twenty five year old trailer, he's not available, and I can do this. And somebody shows up with a back year old trailer, and it's on crap, you know, point. And so that, that's the hard part, I see what we're putting, bottom of the heart.
That's why, that's why I asked if the new ones, if the finances, if money works on the new ones, he said yes. So if the money works on a new one, then if you can buy a twenty year old trailer for forty thousand dollars, then that really works. We need to back up a whole page. So, this is gonna take hours. I apologize, we're starting on the next page.
Well, let's go and finish that page.
Okay, so.
Oh, we worked it out, yeah, we worked it out, but the county kinda went through it, we rewrote our thoughts and kinda worked it out. The, the years, what I was basing that on is in nineteen ninety six, they started doing two by six construction on trailer. So they had two by six walls, so I, I kinda educated myself when I did this, but two by four wall works here, it's worked here forever, a lot of homes still have two by four walls now. So a trailer house with two by six walls is an upgraded house from most of the houses in town, because a lot of houses in town were built, you know, seventy five, hundred years ago. And when we talk about the construction of a trailer home not being good, they're built to the standards above what houses are built here, because we haven't been.
So, so if you started looking at nineteen ninety six, and that's when they improved them, and Swift just pulled up that any unit from nineteen ninety seven can be permitted. Then, then why do we have nineteen ninety? Nineteen seventy seven? Right, well, if you think they got better in nineteen ninety six, but you're asking for them to bring in from nineteen ninety.
Except the modules in nineteen ninety had two by six walls.
Yeah, yeah, they have them.
Robert, we're actually looking at pictures of trailer houses.
We're talking about a variety of, of the modules can be in there, but we did bring in a module from nineteen ninety six, nineteen ninety, it would have two by six walls.
Yeah, I'd be okay with a module, I think you want.
I won't have anything with one by two walls in there. I won't have no metal roofs for the pyramids, you know, we'll, we're, we wanted to look like the pictures, I thought that was a railway approach. You'll look no worse than these pictures, you know what I mean, it's. There's very little difference between the two and the. The spirit and the structural, I mean, the difference between a nice and. Rough, sometimes you will think them.
The girl would be okay with nineteen ninety five, twenty twenty three, and that you pointed in our criteria that they need to be no worse working than the world's a picture show. Would you be okay with that?
I would be okay with that.
Because a picture show.
I don't think you'll put twenty forty three on the end either.
No.
No, I think it's how, yeah, oh. There's just a beginning age, or you put no older than a certain.
Maybe you could just put, what is it, nineteen ninety seven, nineteen ninety two? No older than nineteen ninety.
Five?
Ninety five. When, when placed, and then in ten years, you're putting in a thirty year old trailer, and then you're putting in a forty year old trailer. He's gotta, he's gotta approve them anyway, it says.
The, the way around that is raises the county's dive on this shit.
Each five years it raises. So ninety seven, so ninety six becomes two thousand one, five years. Two thousand one, five years, that's in ten years, you're into a trailer over the two thousand five.
It does happen here that they will need to exceed all custom county and colorability codes. I would put regulations in there. So that if we do change it, what did you say, you're gonna change it? Well, we need to exceed all custom county regulations, and there is no colorability, well, colorability codes for electrical and plumbing, yeah. HB's, well, okay, it's all in colors. I need, I need just regulations, so to be insured regulations to pre carry of a hand.
No, because in ten years, and twenty years, and thirty years, that's older and older and older. We can put no older than some number of years old. And then that's a moving timeline, and in twenty years, he's still putting in a home that's no older than twenty years old.
So twenty twenty three was, twenty twenty three is a twenty five year old trailer, nineteen ninety eight, ninety seven.
So that's twenty eight years, that's twenty eight years old. I'm saying no older than twenty years old, so today he could buy a trailer that was built in two thousand three and put it in there. In ten years. In ten years, when it's twenty thirty three, he can buy a trailer that was built in two thousand thirteen. In ten years, when it's twenty thirty-three, he can buy a trailer that was built in two thousand and thirteen. The trailer, when it goes in there, is not older than twenty years old.
We're like making that twenty-five years. Be okay with second five more years, we could go nineteen ninety-eight. And twenty, it's just, it's just five more years. At this, and that goes up, so at twenty thirty, twenty-five years, two thousand and five.
And why, what's your logic for that?
Just to give him some leeway, that's.
That's what he proposed.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what he proposed. Just give him some leeways.
Thirty-three years. No, he he reportedly proposed twenty-five years a little bit.
It's made of ninety-eight or ninety-nine. So it would just, it would just go with with the cost. In ten years.
Yeah, I'm just commenting on. I I I stated the reason why I picked those years, you know, for structural safety, the house is something like, you know.
I know, I know. I'm here's, so here's my thing, okay, so maybe they look the same on the outside. Do you know what the inside of a twenty-five-year-old trailer house looks like? It's got, it's got vinyl, it's that thing, it's got, it's got. It's got form, or it's got plastic shelves, and when that thing gets to be twenty-five, thirty-five years old, it can look the same on the outside, in the inside deteriorates significantly. That's why these things are being found. Because the ins, the interior, I I understand what you're saying about the two-by-six walls. They are still put in the absolute cheapest vinyl, cheapest cabinets, the cheapest everything in those things. So, let's just move on. I'm just, we'll just move on. We think, I think I can't.
Well, this will decide whether I do it or not, basically. This conversation right here, you're speaking to the Custer County, you you don't want this thing, because if it can't be a certain age, there ain't no reason for me to do it. It's not profitable at all. That's why nobody does it. You know, I lived in a trailer most of my life. I I lived with that vinyl floor that's horrible, and I mean, a lot of people did. Well, good deal, then, you know, it's, is your, how old yours?
I've lived in a long time ago.
Okay. But I mean.
To move on, we're just about twenty-five, just to move on? You're good at that, okay. And then we added regulations, just finishing this one page. Um, it says electricity will not be provided, but below you say electric will be set up for all units.
Alright, electric, I think.
Yeah.
They're like, we're not paying the electric, but that's, directly the moment, missionaries are like.
Okay, so utilities for renters.
Yeah.
Electricity will not be provided, that needs to be stated something differently. Is it saying they're not gonna provide the electric?
Oh.
Well, can you put that, can you put that, that the tenant will be responsible for water and electric?
Well, we're paying for the water.
Yes, yes.
We're paying for the water, they're, they're paying for the own water, Chris, we're gonna pay for the trash, the water. And that way, they don't worry about stuff.
So instead of providing and we put paid for, okay, so will not be paid for. Will not be included in the lot rent, electricity, I think, will be the responsibility of the, will not be included in the lot rent. Because you're still providing it.
Yeah, that's, I just assumed that didn't.
And sewer. It's, it's sewer will be included in the lot rent. I was trying to stay with your verbiage.
Yeah.
Included in the lot rent or not included in the lot?
Why don't you put those two together, which is the water.
Water.
Okay, I guess you type it, that's fine.
Yeah, electricity, okay, are the responsibility. And then down below, first septic system will be engineered for four, three-bedroom modulars will be stuffed up for more modulars per Custer County specs. That's what we're gonna get to so far. Do you wanna say something more generic? That you'll have electric or engineered septic systems ready to be put in, or something like that?
Yeah, yeah, they will all.
Does that make more sense, so that it?
You're a hundred percent right. It's just verbiage, it's.
I'm just trying, if we really are gonna include this as part of conditions, that it needs to cover you through.
I didn't realize that was part of the condition as well.
That's what we're, that's what we're trying to do, right?
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
Well, I mean, the the condition, I didn't realize the condition to feed my renters agreement, uh, you know, what I'm providing, what I ain't providing. That's just part of my my operating procedures, really. That's basically, you know, the government saying, well.
I, that's what I've heard.
Oh, I'm I'm just clarifying, because I was kind of.
If you wanna exclude some of this, then I'd be with that too. I just need to know, as a secretary,
Okay, yeah.
what to what to put in and what not.
What you say, septic system will be engineered for the first, fourth, three-bedroom modulars up to twenty, a total of twenty-two.
Okay. That sounds good. Um, as far as utilities for renters, I mean, it it's important for us as a county to know that you are providing dumpsters, I think that should be included. That water will be provided. Uh, electricity will be provided, that propane will be provided, a lot of forest sewer. Whether it's included in the lot rent or not, that's up to you. We can leave all of that out, just the fact that it's included should be part of the condition.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, that's just reiterating what the state statute say, you know, I have to do that to, to even operate there.
So do we?
But that's why I'm just, we're overcomplicated, I think.
And do we, if it's part of the state statute, do we need to include it as conditions?
No, we just have to say that he he needs to comply with all county and state regulations.
Okay, so we changed building codes to regulations up here in Colorado. And then we can get rid of everything else.
Yeah, maybe it's simple, I.
We can be ripped that one if he has to comply with all county and state regulations.
That's what I just said, that we can get rid of that, we can get rid of site plans. Do you want to say that you are dark skies compliant?
I'm fine with that. I don't want all the lights on. I don't want them shining, nothing.
Do you want that as part of this?
If if that's what he's proposing.
Okay, then we'll put that in.
The only one I would.
I think that's important for our community. Everybody appears to be big on it, and I, I agree with you, I just think my office is awesome to see all the stars.
I would, I would, on the one that says water.
Yes.
Commercial wells will be run to each modular. I would just put water will be run to each modular, because you don't know for sure where your water's coming from.
Yep.
Main water, the water.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll have all that in place before I, I break one blade of grass, you know, change anything over, because I have all my doubts in the room before I started, I just, I can't proceed with the next steps until I get approval from you guys to, that the county wants this, if they want it, want it, if they don't, they know.
That is honestly, I I I looked through page one, and I didn't, I don't know if any of that needs to be in.
No, because I mean, that's basically just, is.
I agree with that, I wouldn't put any of that in.
Like an S P R, it was a little different scenario, it's one of them, the Custer Center, long-term, I mean, if I tell these people, you know, they can't do this, they can't do that.
Alright, so we will put in the the first paragraph of page two with the changes of twenty-five years and doing regular, uh, regulations and Colorado regulations. Then we'll put that you'll do water and power and sewer and propane. We'll do generic terms for those. That would be it. If you improve, keep. Awesome.
I would just suggest on the rules of regulations, including a fee for your twenty-five-dollar rate, the you for your desk and all of our picture time. That's what they should believe, based on the Colorado state rules, which is fifteen day rest.
But I mean.
Then you're.
That's not for us, I'm just suggesting.
I mean. So basically, we're just saying he has to have the water. Want electricity, sewer.
Propane.
He doesn't provide the propane.
Yeah.
They'll get propane service, they're gonna pay their own bills.
Right, these these services, right, and it will be trenched to each.
Unless it's an electric trailer, and they don't have electric, so, you know, I mean, there is that, there's options if they have electric, Peter's on, like.
You may not need the propane.
Yeah, I mean, that.
Do you wanna not put it that it's trenched?
Well, I don't know if they're gonna need that, I won't take it over there.
Should I get rid of propane?
No.
Okay.
I would, and I would say that has to be trenched if it's propane.
Yeah.
If it's not necessary.
Yeah.
Then.
They'll look it up.
Then they, yeah, they don't.
Common sense of eyes, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Alright, well, that's pretty basic.
Because each one will have its own service, its own tank, you know. Okay, we'll send someone in.
Okay.
I found about them out, I I didn't really plan on it, but we'll have like a, the cattle friends around with and cattle dogs, but because it is, they don't want to.
Do we need to put that in at all? I don't think so either, that's up to you.
Yeah.
I mean, if you find out real quick, the cows start roving on their trailers.
Yeah.
Those people get real upset.
Playground equipment, woo, give you back scratches.
Give us cars. But.
These are your corrections to. What we discussed.
Okay.
Yes, might I say it one more time? Um, just. Let you guys know, I mean, I, I mean, it's gonna cost me three hundred thousand dollars before I ever get a dime for it in those places. That's just, just the basics of getting everything over there. So I I really did want this to be nice, I wanted to succeed, but that helps you out with, you know, any mindset on this, it's, it's a large investment. It's not, not something I'm doing, because I I wanna tear this county down by any means. It's just, I think there's something up there that everybody's missing, is there is a need for affordable housing, and affordable housing is not a twenty-four thousand dollar, twenty-four hundred dollar a month thing, so we're, but in my, my opinion, you know, there there's several people. Uh, what was the name, the, the trailer park that separated Don Conover bought? When me and her graduated, that's the first place we moved, when we got out of high school, we got married, moved into Fine, Fine trailer park. Mary Sykes lived in the Fine trailer park at one time, and we all, I mean, everybody's lived in it. And it's, it's a stepping stone for people to move forward with their lives. And, you know, as far as vinyl on the floor, that, like, I really don't want that. I would like to make it nice and give it an opportunity, I, I mean, you can take a nineteen, a house built in eighteen hundred even, and make it nice. It's, it's, you know, there's no difference between a house and a modular, it's, it's just basically a stepping stone. They're built with the same lumber, same everything. That's all I got.
So I can't draw that in, I will.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, there's people that do it all the time. There's, well, pictures of Barbara moved that way. Yeah. Yeah, for sure.
It's not really easy. I moved that we recommended to the, the O C C to approve the Lions affordable housing S U P with the conditions of him placing no older than twenty-five years of age, um, single or double wide modulars or dog. Whatever. We'll just put modulars. Is that, is a modular included in trailer home, is that okay?
The, the current terminology was HUD, and I can't remember the other one.
Can I just put, can I, can you see your HUD? Can I just put residences? No, okay, so what is it? U B C, okay, universal, okay, so no older than HUDs or U B Cs, no older than twenty-five years when placed. I'm just gonna read through these. Clean and sleek earth tone colored homes. I don't think you can say are the color of choice, I'm gonna say, get rid of that. Clean and sleek earth tone colored homes. Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't think the word sleek belongs in the title. How about earth tone colored homes? Okay. No flat rooftops allowed, must be pitched roofs in modern appearance.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what you put. Will be set and skirted to match the modular. Will meet.
To match the U B C.
Okay, alright, that's the, the HUD or U B C. Will meet, it should be, or exceed all Custer County regulations and Colorado regulations. So let's just say all Custer County and state regulations. Cause that's the way I've heard it before. The outside will be zera-scape, I don't know if I can spell that differently, and will have gravel rock for better maintenance control. And then it's the R I, it's X E R, it's the S C. Dumpsters will be provided on premises for convenient waste removal. Water, electricity, propane, and sewer will be available. Like that? Uh, septic systems will be engineered for up to twenty-two units as needed. And lighting, okay, propane will be trenched to each you HUD or U B C. Each month, each, again, I'll, I'll combine that and say that they will have their own tank. Are you gonna put tanks in the toilet? Okay.
Definitely.
No, propane.
Oh, I'll work that, yeah, I will.
You will, okay, I'll leave it then. And lighting for the park will be dark skies compliant. I did. I just put them all together, and then.
Okay.
What do you think?
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, we'll hear it in a second. Further discussion.
I'd just like to say, he the, when it says the regulation, resolution, any factory, vehicle constructed after nineteen seventy-seven should be eligible for a permit. And that was because of HUD, I think that's what HUD, nineteen seventy-seven, when they took over the regulations. And those trailers before that are the ones that were built, yeah, were built, yeah.
And those were just slightly better, but they were there, and then, you know, they they make progressions every year, it's, but, you know, they they do have a bad reputation.
I have a question, if that says manufactured homes, can we just say manufactured homes? Instead of?
No.
Okay, just ask. Okay, that's fine.
The, can I accept them on that one? I did, the advantage is you saying that is, like you said, manufactured, it's not like you go buy one down in Kansas City, but it has the wiring and stuff, right? A lot of the new tiny homes are that way.
Okay.
You know, they're not compliant with any electrical plumbing codes, they're basically R B.
Or shed.
Yeah, and that's, that's why I'm not asking for that, that's to clarify it.
Alright, I appreciate that, thanks. Okay, we might wanna change that in our resolution then.
Okay, good move, this second is, there is further discussion. Uh, Daryl.
Yes, the reason for it is, you need the housing, but this all started with modular homes, and that was something to turn trailer park, but you're not saying yes, so. That's the only reason. I I'm gonna trust that you, that you're a, it will look decent when you grow a lot.
I have a, I have conditions and agree that it's very needed.
Daryl.
With Daryl, a reluctant yes. I'm just concerned about what it looks like. I I totally agree with you that we need the housing, and I appreciate you trying to put the stuff to provide that. I just. I just, I just don't want it to look like a trailer park.
Yeah.
I vote yes, I, and I think we can hopefully follow the rules and apply well and keep it nice and private and make the community proud.
I vote aye, and I think that, you know, this is something that the county needs, he's got the right idea. When, when we started, I had the first bit, it was all much involved. I'm sure that the reason that going down to trailers is mostly financial. It's a big life in the role now. But I think that with the type of trailers I was talking about, and with the age level to replace all of it, I think it could be a nice little. Daryl?
Should we make it twenty-six point two five years?
Short my answer, I throw it. Okay, most carriers will be recommended to the question. Okay, on, on to the next one.
Why am I paying in the bottom, huh? I do, I, 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 I just, put yourself in my seat, you know, and I'm just, I'm actually, by Craig, I'm not a communicator, I'm not very good on communicator people. I guess, uh.
I'm glad we're not having this conversation with the board.
Yeah.
Well, I think what you hear from us is that, just don't make it look like crap. You know, just don't make it look like crap, you know, don't have trash on our old stuff, junk on ours, you know, that's a beautiful road, that's a beautiful park, just kind of let's not screw it up. You gotta just do that. What is this list right from our regulations?
The list of absolutely not.
Okay, okay.
We took some off, but, okay, but this doesn't necessarily match.
Y'all answered.
Uh-huh.
This is a new.
Yeah, we need, you need to present first.
Mr. Art, you ready?
I'm ready.
All right, so what we're proposing up here, guy still is not too much worse. So this is, I wouldn't talk to you about, you know, like, when the county road did that, they split that off, but that's something like a PR. So these are actually two different offices. And so this is one, which will be the cattle park, and this one here will be industrial park.
Will be what?
An industrial park.
Industrial?
Yeah, and then this is like, this is like county road that ain't fair.
Right.
And then this is the interior road we're gonna build, none of this is set, it wasn't gonna build, this is just showing an idea of what the office would feel there. This, this particular area in the in master plan, just carrying that thing. Um, this was designed for future commercial expansion or west side and so. And that's kind of where we're headed for that is to put a little commercial park there.
I see. Access off there.
Yeah, this is county road, and then this is like two forty-one, this is the big road.
Right.
And then here, the joint of moss here, and see, you're selling this forty acre piece here. And you actually have two, two lots, exactly, if you want.
Maybe.
Yeah.
You have to stand, you don't have to.
Oh. No, count and stuff, but that's all.
I, I think we can, you're, you're like, they want it, you can get water.
Yeah, he can.
You have better luck getting water than I.
I was blown away by, when I asked what else we use the water for, and I killed him, they said, that's fine, just long as they ain't for agriculture, I was kind of upset by that, but I wanted to argue with him. I argue a lot of facts that I should, and I should just keep my mouth shut, no.
Good luck, Ed.
Thank you, Steve.
Yeah?
Proceed.
Well, uh, stop some side of that, we're gonna put in an industrial park. This is my. This is, uh, the road, and this is the commercial side, this is the view side, I've got it here, and they're gonna look up above that, you know. I, I, like, of course, I remember about the trash place being here and driving by that. I, I expected people to try to be polite and clean, and I am, when we had that site, there's, I said, I wanna try to Google that, and I found it. So that, that is part of it too, but. This is like the commercial side to this, my son's motorcycle parking right here.
You guys probably don't have.
My son's track. It's, it's just our private motorcycle.
It looks fine, no, I'm just wondering, where, where do you, what's your name?
Looking for.
These aren't, these are a lot, and I don't know the size of the lot. That was just thrown, softened together there. I, I don't have these reached out.
So, so we did, added the parking would be built into it.
This report.
Into spot.
Yeah, how, how far apart is this? These two are just lots.
Well, this is two hundred and forty feet, less than seven, that, that's three hundred feet.
So you've got, so this is about sixty foot separation.
Yeah. Yeah. And I, I really don't, I don't have anything, I'm just putting down intentions of, look at possible, together, it's hard to, you guys look at, if somebody comes in and wants to have a, a ladder, I would be happy to, you know, if somebody wants, like, like pregnant, you guys have a ton of people coming, I should, they should be, right? No, or a guy with a sawmill, I'll make him place the sawmill on. So then, if he didn't wanna do that, because I've got another question for you, is that should raise his taxes, and that's home on twice. So this actually should be like, well, here's. I put them up there, I don't know if they are, the line. And so, I mean, this is another option for a guy who wants to do a sawmill, he can't really use a lot of this thing, that's, that's what the intentions of this are.
Where would the trash dump be?
I'll be on there. Oh.
No, for those properties.
Oh, oh, for each property to have a dumpster, yeah.
Well, I mean, yeah, we're, we're.
Well, this is an entire lot, so this guy can put his here.
Okay, so which one have?
Yeah.
Are you gonna build these buildings, or are you just leasing lots?
I will build the super. If somebody would like to have a, you know, something that we can be on and be out there.
So the decent people aren't building their own buildings? You will lease them a lot.
Leasing a lot of the building on it, but something viable, like, I feel like I can put, you know, a two hundred thousand dollar building on it, I have my pocket, and we'll build on the building.
And you'll own the building?
Yeah, I'm building on it.
And you'll lease the building, yeah, okay.
And then. Yeah.
So, nobody, uh, can't, anybody in my business in here and say, hey, I want, I, I need one. Okay, protective, uh, protective architecture on what you want.
Yeah, I wanna have.
The whole, that's a Spanish mind here.
Yeah. Yeah, the part of me, all, all more, like, in my old March scenario, you know, kind of what we just do. It'll be more that style, and I'm not trying to get like a downtown, parents, I want more like commercial setting, because, you know, what, what we allow on our property, I don't know, or in the county. You guys are all wearing this, I can have my, all my excavators, and all my dumps we were talking about earlier in my year, I can have that, I'm tired of you. And I don't need it for men to have.
I just could have said.
I, I know, and I'm not going back, I'm just, I'm better at the engineering reason why this would be valued, or if somebody wants to do that, but yet there isn't a full commitment or it was restricted.
And the question on here is, are you required all their work to be inside these buildings, or can they have, like, if they have an excavator, they can keep it outside of it?
That's used for the, is, like, someday, it, it'll be more city. Not everybody wants to have a track, so I, so I didn't force that way, I see that coming this way, but there's nothing here right now like this, so that's one kind of proposal you need to do ahead of this. Because one day, I was saying, you know, somebody's gonna say, well, I don't like it, I don't like it, I don't want the tractors up there. Long as you don't lose that.
I mean, basically, what he's looking at, something, it's all after rain.
Yeah, like the industrial park area, I think those are ancient, but it's still alive, but. Play balls on it, and then.
Yeah, but the appropriate company.
Those are, those are all the vision they own, but just kind of a nice thing, I, I just kind of want the the gold a little more, have a little more.
Yeah, but what I'm concerned about is the one that's down behind the, uh, on this place, with Joe Ford, he's down there, that guy's got five or six particular pieces of wood out there. He was looking nice, not that it was, crashed all of a sudden, over the year, Joel's off. But that's, that's, that is my concern, and that's everything else looking for.
And that's, you know, that's, that's kind of why I picked this area, because in your master plan, that's the county, this, that's all it's talking about, in the master plan, this is the area where all this was designed to be in. Master plan was that all commercial and industrial on that route.
Now they're looking at the.
Yeah, it's like in the middle of town, and put it everywhere, and this is just giving an option, you know, if cities, if towns, it's, no, where did I mean, like, I heard they're talking about, I don't know, what commercial spaces go in or out of town, you know. Like, the first thing you see when you come in town is concrete, and then the shop and checks on the right, and up there, you know. You know, they, they better, definitely up there, a little bit, I thought, but.
They do.
No.
And I understand that would be.
That, this is all the reading of that, and that's why, I, I'm still gonna try to, you know, we're being right there, but that's why I'm proposing footless out there, is for that reason, industrial.
So is this list to go with the, um.
No, that's just ideas.
Yeah, well, that's okay, so please, it'll, that, that's.
It'll ask lists to be part of it.
I, I would prefer that because.
Yes.
Uh.
It would be, would have to be conditions.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, now I'm gonna guess that the concrete plant would not have that, if we're gonna put in a concrete plant, I want to leave the ability for the county to be that separately.
Well, it would be repeat separation.
Not, so.
Well, we put it in the list.
Yeah, if it's on his list, no.
So I think concrete plants move off, move off of that.
That, that, that he's already put one in there, then it comes back.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that, that's, that's borderline industrial, so.
What's a towing lot, does that mean about fifty cars?
Yep, yep, it would have to be contained, I mean, we live in a dystopia, I mean, everything's grown, everything's getting bigger, there's gotta be a space for it somewhere. As long as, you know, you make rules to confine stuff like that, it's, it's not necessarily a bad thing, it's everywhere you go. I mean.
Make up for regulations, sound like.
You, you go out the light road, and you got, you got the two quarter potty places and the dumpster places right across from each other, and you, you got a lot full of logs out there, and you know. It, it's stretched out in every direction, and.
Yeah, my, my only concern was, I mean, you've gotten a lot of, you know, when we first talked about this, you were talking about, you know, people that see welding shop, excavation, well, maybe electrician. You know, builders that want places to put their stuff.
And there.
Then we get down here to office spaces.
Yeah.
And that kind of got away from the industrial park type of stuff.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, and the sewing shop.
Let's keep going, can you go one by one?
One by one?
If you're fine.
Can we talk about each one a little bit?
If we need to, if we need to, otherwise, we're gonna be here, I can be here, it's three or six o'clock, so.
Okay.
Let's keep one, but yeah, if there's a discussion.
Towing lot, lumberyard. You know, that's basically industrial waste management.
What does that mean?
It was a trash collection.
That goes, so if we've already got, oh, then why do we have waste management on the small ladder?
It was one to move all the day later, for it's better design than that lot, for some reason, why, why was thinking that, because they're, I mean, they're literally next door to each other. Yeah, I can throw a rock from that one, and hit that.
I know, I just.
But then you go down here, and you've got sewing shop.
Yep. These are options, they're not everything I wanna put in there, but the reason why I was making a list like this, just to, in plain engage, what I was thinking was, um, because one of the things is I'm paying commercial taxes on this, you know what I mean? I, I don't have, this, this isn't paying private taxes, and then, um, so like, each one of those buildings I build will be like four thousand dollars in one, and I have to revenue for the county. So I would like to keep them rented out, and if I gotta come back to you guys and ask you everything, I, I wanna put in that building, that don't really make it commercial, so if we're gonna do that, we're not making it commercial. Taking thousands of dollars on taxes to the community, which I don't mind paying, as long as. Does that make sense to you guys, when I go and get that?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think I would give you some more leeway, in all of these offices that you delineated, tax office, insurance office, attorney office, just call it office based.
Yeah.
An office space is fine, it covers it all, and then you don't have to come back if somebody wants to have an office to insult them, that's not the goal, so I should take off all those other office things, and just, just call it office. And then, okay, the waste management.
I'm, I'm due to strike now, I don't, we gotta stop for now anyways.
We gotta start three hours.
Taking the architect, that's where those are offices, right?
Most of the offices.
Three of them are as an office?
Yes.
Those are then office.
Is restaurant, is, is, don't we need special stuff for restaurants? Or can you put a restaurant anywhere?
Well, you gotta, you gotta, I mean, except for, you can put one anywhere you want, as long as you provide with the state.
That's, that's, water, sewer, and all that stuff. Okay, I just, that's fine, I just wondered.
And we were just throwing the list out there again, you know, we don't want people to wanna build, and, you know, I.
Then he, then he's back from water.
Yeah.
Sure, sure.
Exactly. And I'm hoping with, you know, after the water stuff all calms down, we can talk to them sensibly, you know, the investment for me to run water from town to out is like a hundred and forty thousand dollars, take water out there. The place we got now, we currently have fifteen young, well, which is exceptional, or we got one of vessels over there, and I hope to find two more of them, but, yeah, I don't know that we will.
Well, see, that, that's the thing, you're down to abide by the state, those are the regulations, again, as soon as you put commercial on there.
Yep. Yep, and they got a meter on them, and, and that's why, I mean, I'm gonna do everything up to part on it, that's.
What you're gonna do with office space, you go slash, including, not except. Because dispensaries and total turns in that, in office spaces.
But if they're specifically not allowed, then they're not allowed. What, what is, what is a tech shop?
Where you at?
Uh, six from the.
Oh, it's like, you like your mechanic shop?
Yeah.
No?
Yeah.
You like a letter of on the light road?
Yeah, you, you've got. I would propose that you don't do any motor vehicle or random repairs or anything like that on your property, and that would be tech shop.
Sure.
Do, what? Because of waste?
There are state regulations.
That's gonna be done somewhere. Was it known?
I mean, we got three on the range, right?
Why with the, with the state federal regulations, disposal of that? Otherwise I could be. Well, and freeze, disposal of that is.
I think I can legally do that with my own yard right now, can't I?
No. Um, you can't personally, no, I was, I was reading that, um, it, it says motor vehicle repairs is actually permitted.
I didn't know that.
That's, and that's, I was going through this list, and then I saw the tech shop.
But that's the ones I'm trying to hit, is the ones that aren't allowed at your house somewhat, there's some, I mean, like a sewing shop isn't allowed at your house, which is basically saying.
And I know one.
But yeah.
Okay, if you're comfortable with, that's fine, I was just looking at things that were not allowed.
I mean.
What about barrels, storage barrels?
Why don't we do the bigger stuff is, like, I can't really visit, like you. Like, you know, she was mentioning, like to the concrete plant, and it's something that we bring out.
I would say, yes, because I.
Yeah, the towing lot, the mechanics, the concrete plant.
Have that come through again?
Come through again, if something like that pops up.
As an SGP.
Then you take them off of this for that.
Yeah, take them off or, or leave them at your word of desire, you know, to be revisited at a future time if necessary, because.
Well, anything on this list would be that.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm good with that, because if you had a plan, this is how we're disposing and storing oil and antifreeze and all of that, that, then I would like to hear that.
Yeah.
So a concrete plant, towing, waste management.
No, not towing, towing should be fine.
A towing lot, is that what you call it?
Yeah, absolutely.
It's just storage.
Yeah.
If you're gonna do the concrete plant, why don't you do the towing lot, that, that, that's a back, before approval.
Yeah.
You want a towing lot?
I'm fine with that.
Should be, you got, you have that. Some fence, some fencing around.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I should say, yeah, you know, to make sure that it's up to the.
Well, yeah, the state police have regulations on it, it has to be fenced in six feet high, has to have like a constant wire around the top, luckily, so I'm okay with marking that one down too, I don't want.
I thought you already had the new tonne company wanting to.
They, right, they used to place in Silver Cliff, now we're gonna get them right in a few in towns, so.
So you point it off?
Yeah, well, we, yeah, we can take it off and revisit it if we need it.
All right.
Everybody's visiting.
So the floor, tech shop, waste management, towing lot, and concrete.
And then anything that said office, architect, engineer, realtor, tax.
Just.
Can we, you know, why do you not have a bank over on that accepted list?
I just, it's, until the town grows enough that it'd be out of the way, you know, I, I didn't think it would be something that somebody would.
Probably, only if it, if one shouldn't have it be not accepted, yeah.
Yeah, we, we can put a bank on that.
I'm gonna move that one over to the accepted list.
We'll put a bank if there's somebody.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
I'm fine with the hospital there, I think, as long as it's placed legally as properly.
Yeah, I, I like the gentleman's.
Yeah, that was my idea.
Was tech shop. Why do you not model it?
Because I put the trailer park across the street.
Cemetery.
And kids, I mean, I want that to be like that.
Cemetery, obviously, gas station, it took being off of hospital, since you went there, I would like to add adult erotic store.
With these ones? Which list were we on?
Yeah, and I would prefer you did not have a smoker friendly establishment, the same reason you've got kids across the street. You know where they come in, there's a smoker friendly? Smoker, people could go in there and smoke out of sight.
Oh.
Vape, like those.
Oh, vape thing?
Vape and smoke, and basically, I, with, with, you've got a trailer park across the street, in my opinion, you shouldn't have had a smoker friendly establishment.
I, I remember you. So like, just like, two separate cells, like.
Like a vape school.
Yeah.
Maybe, yeah.
Yeah, and they often have a place like that can be called vape dens.
Yeah, I, I just don't want my kids coming in here.
I mean, adult bookstore usually is where those places we were talking about earlier, it's.
That too, but we can, we can say, um, adult books, adult book slash erotic stores.
And novelties.
Novelties, that's, that's the word I want, novelty store.
I know.
He's gonna move.
They just say long-term rental.
And you said you don't care about vehicle repairs, is that what I heard?
We, no, I, I mean, I think that's gonna come into your tech shop, and that's gonna come back to us.
Yeah, so you took that off, well, then it would, you took it, okay, so we just took it off and then we'll, we'll dress it, all right, do you guys think of anything else that shouldn't be there?
Or did you guys mean, I didn't write that tech shop, but did you guys mean like electronics tech shop?
Yeah, like computers.
Is that why there's two?
Tablet tech?
Yeah, like, I misunderstood them, they had mechanics.
So it would be okay.
Yeah.
Isn't that a retail store, it's already on here?
Yeah, so, like flower store follows under that.
Yeah, you're right.
What about that?
Read store is a retail store.
You guys like that part?
No, I do.
That's mine.
I do, yeah, I like that, I like that, I said pretty, you did a nice job on that list.
Yeah, that was her.
Okay, you did a nice job on that.
And her.
Good job.
They all worked together, trying to figure out what would be acceptable, and we were just forming like concrete plant, I, we're just putting down my ideas, because. It's, like I said, that was designed to be, you know, it's kind of in a hole, it's a low spot, it's, it's around the bridge, there's like three cars a day go on that road. It's, it's very minimal traffic.
I think that's a good place to remain minimal. Because that, that gives you the wrong reason, we help you sell, we help you rent.
Yes, yes.
Oh, and so if we don't have.
Especially if you're gonna have office space searches, you don't have office space, they're not like that, offices are probably.
I was always amazed on what I thought people liked and what people wouldn't like, because there's a tent down in town right next to a mechanic shop with an air impact running all the way along over there, about how did they, you know what I mean, I'm just throwing that out there, it's like.
Yeah, I'm not the same.
Yeah, I wouldn't go stay in that place just because I wouldn't want to listen to an air rash while I was on vacation like him, but that's not my decision, but.
I'd like to know how you're gonna handle signage for everybody. You've got, you're not gonna be able to see all of these things back from there, how are you gonna let people know what businesses are there?
I believe this is a small community, and they'll all find them if they did.
I mean, even in the springs, the signage is on the building back in the.
Above the ore.
Okay, so, so you don't.
Google's a fantastic thing, that's why, that's why I didn't mind knocking the signs down, but.
You're not gonna have their own addresses.
Yeah, we'll have that.
Unit one, you need to do that.
Yeah, we have to have that for diner and wine access. They'll have to each have their own address.
At the end of your building, you would have, this building has these, they're an address, on the end of your building. So if they're going to one twelve C, then they go with down that building.
Yeah, yeah. Yep, no, we'll make everything all, I, I don't like signs everywhere, I'm kind of with them when they get rid of all those highway signs and stuff, I.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I like Google, I mean.
I like face.
Yeah.
I need to know what's going in, it's my.
I would like to get definition of these sizes.
Of their what?
We don't know the size yet.
Oh, I said you didn't know, never just.
Yeah.
You have a range, so.
No, I don't, I thought, probably the less the better, in my opinion, this is just like optimal layout for optimal room, but.
What is, what is the square, what is a acre?
Well, it's thirty, yeah, it's like thirty acres, thirty seven acres.
Forty one point eight.
We'll know that.
Well, that's overall, that's a.
The one side is thirty four point nine eight.
That's the total lot.
So this one should not say.
Oh, yeah, that's changed.
Okay, yeah, because the lot on the west side of the road.
We're doing that separately, right now it's still long, but.
Four point nine eight acres.
So that, Dorothy, the application is.
So twelve hundred.
Right now, the application says everything.
Yeah, we have.
What does the other one say? So this is, so we, yeah, we'll change those. The windows, we have to remind that. There, yes, that's what we have to turn.
The county did it. When I go back, go there, we lose something by that lot.
What is that, I want, here fixing it. You said forty is going to get it fixed.
We just need to change the acre, the acre one, since that's split, so they don't, they don't both say forty one point eight.
What's that? Yeah.
You're gonna go in there, that's, that would be a right, you might want a section.
Yeah.
For people like that.
And that's all modular.
It is.
Ron Mason brought it in.
Really, really, it's just, say twelve point seven nine. Feet by twelve hundred feet.
Yeah.
But that doesn't, that's, that's not.
Well, he's not going on with, he's gonna stop before.
That just seems really small. Twelve seventy nine by twelve, once a. That's a calculation, or is it one, or is it twelve thousand seven or? You've got, you've got one, two, seven, nine, zero. That's what you would say. Because that's where that one.
Once, once this is kind of done too, I'm gonna have all surveying, have it back, but now I didn't want to spend the expenses, so that's thirty three point four eight 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 to serve there, that's twelve hundred by twelve hundred.
I'm sorry, say it again, so when Dorothy has.
It's, well, we're, we're gonna surveying it back, that's just what those measurements are, and that's all.
Right now, based on the assessment.
Yeah, they're not exactly hundred percent.
Six point nine on the housing side, or thirty four point nine eight on the commercial side.
You got it.
Yeah, and they're off a little bit.
I trust you, I know, but you're not gonna wait and get it surveyed and then update your application, you want that to go through as quickly as you can, I would think.
Yep.
Which is, that would give you chance.
Right. Although we'll never look at it, but yeah.
And how it can be listed, from what I've looked at, it can be listed as everything on the east side of the highway is this amount, approximately this amount, and on the west side is approximately this amount, based on the way that the county or divides.
Right now, right now, it's four one point eight eight acres.
And I have that.
It's that word. The two are we said, we take this message over there.
In order to have this. Completely, I have two blocks. Because the roads, but they were subdivided without this. Okay. Forty one point eight. But it's been subdivided by the county.
But these are two SGPs, which says. It just needs to specify.
We just need to create those two blocks. I mean, he's, he's basically, he, he's asking for a subdivision, because he didn't subdivide, it's somebody else did.
All right.
I'm just thinking that might be an area idea.
I mean, I think anything, I think, basically, it hurts, you know.
Well, that just might be really nice to have.
It's one of that one watch, whether it's. What type of animal it is, because I mean.
Bargain. Yes. Well, I'm gonna bargain all right next to a trailer park, so.
Yeah.
You know, if they're gonna be getting their kind of sleep, I'll say, but, I mean, if it's inside insulated. We just gotta kind of try to make things as good as we can make them, and there's only so many rules you put on people, there's only gonna listen to half of what you tell them anyway.
Because, I mean, like a kennel where you could, somebody could come, they could board a dog for a week. I mean. That's something they really need.
I, yes.
I know some people who would love to do it.
There you go.
I may have made a recommendation to approve. The commercials. Have pathways where it aligns, probably exceptions. That the expected future businesses in your list, that concrete plant, waste management, towing lots. And tech shop slash mechanic shop, is what we should call it, not have to be approached for a new SGP.
No, not new one.
Except.
Actually, you wanted it just on.
And that, not except, adult erotic store, and vape store re-added, and that thing, which is not accepted, be moved to the except.
And that kennel.
That kennel.
We know that, that this be.
If that be in order, except.
I'll type that.
That's my motion.
I'll say.
I have a motion on the second, skipper.
Okay.
All right, any further discussions?
Twenty six point two five.
I think that's one for mine.
If there's those references, that's, that's. I will vote aye. I think that's something that looking at, you know, the community here. You know, you've been a successful business venture, and that the community will utilize. Skip.
I vote aye, and I think, I agree with. Community needs it, and I think that. And I show that they will be a good proprietor to get care of this group of community.
I would like for you to raise that motion. A large equipment get to them on the porch, it's so, it's business. So they.
Yeah.
Towing shop.
We need to that.
It takes one.
Oh, towing shop. We got, we got a comment.
Can we say something like, if we have one of them certain map, we could like provide fencing or some way to block it off, or there's some way.
Fencing or more, maybe they could put another building.
More than forty people's might be fenced, well, you've got an excavator, you've got, you've allowed to excavate.
They allow to excavate.
So I don't think we can hand that out, because if that excavates, it's gonna hold the doors outside.
This is gonna be hard to rent office space, but there are games for different.
And we don't know if he's gonna rent any office space, it might all be a huge excavation plan.
Could be.
Okay, so yeah, no, you can't.
So really, okay, so I'll vote yes.
Although.
And if there's anything that I'm, I'm thinking that kind of slides in here, I will, I will come to you guys with anything, I will let Dorothy's office know, just because.
When you think.
I've always done that anyway, I, I communicate with them really well, and then she can tell me why, I think we probably ought to revisit that, you know what I mean?
Why did you vote aye? Why did you vote aye?
So we get it wrong.
It's like a dinner, it's everywhere.
It's based on my motion, it's based on my motion.
Okay, I'm still lost.
My, my aye vote, because the motions that I voted for, that I'm voting for, that the motion we had, which is that these are, that some of the four are excluded in the excepted plan, which is.
Oh, 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 I got you, all right, do, okay, sorry. To do the allow and be accepted and not accepted.
Right. True.
I vote aye, and I think that if you, if it is needed by the community, you vote for not coming. It's not, then they won't come.
Very.
I vote aye, I think it would be helpful to have. A place. That people might have to own for their business.
Okay.
Except, that means that I don't have to buy a three hundred thousand dollar store to sell my trinkets. I have great trinkets.
Okay.
Me too.
I'll control, carry it. Mister. You want to handle it? Something you want to say or?
Oh, this one. Um, does this have to go, or is this something?
We should. We should do it. Okay, in order to create those two blocks. We have to grant it subdivision waiver, why is he subdividing? And he has called with under the subdivision regulations, which are. Long.
Is this an addition to the agenda? Okay. Lot line, they, what is it called?
Called the subdivision request or waiver of subdivision regulations.
It's basically.
Can I get a copy of it?
And it's basically because county for two fifty-one runs through, splits the parcel. Or the parcel hasn't been split, or it is. Requested, but it was by county vote. Okay, therefore, we can create these two lots. Instead of having forty-one point eight acres. Now has a lot of thirty-four point five acre, nine eight acres, and one of six point nine acres. We just ask the commissioners to create these two lots because they were created by the county road.
Being a motion to that fact, yes. I know that we recommend commissioners that we do that.
I mean, it's.
So wave the. You take what you said. I'm, you're moving to make that happen.
Yes.
They're gonna give me a copy in a second.
It separates parts.
I'll say.
But otherwise, I mean. He would be creating a subdivision, and he's not creating a subdivision, subdivision is already made. Okay, and we're going to say that we create these two lots because they were created by the road. All the papers in the file, I say aye. I wish for, make it reasons.
Thank you.
And this is something that, in my time, my information, I imagine we have done probably fifty times.
Okay.
Because there are many places in this county that the road has split these properties. I mean, we created lots of ten acres. In a, you know. That's just what happens when the county road splits your property.
Can I ask an unrelated kind of question?
Yes.
That cost anyone?
Miss here?
Yeah.
I don't have on my price list.
I don't.
I believe it'll cost when he goes to the. Clerking recorders to report it, but I don't have that on my person.
I have to do it.
Sorry, you paid for.
No, no, this was, this is all about me.
Oh.
What was it about?
I would have taken out two lots.
Mr.
Okay, one of them is, so we basically broke down. One by only two thirds of the.
Good.
But. You could make an application for a seven mill thirty-five waiver. Which would allow you to drill the well on this farm. Where you would not be allowed a well on that.
Oh, I, I misunderstood reading, I thought you, by you said, by the county said, like, there was a lot of.
Because you, I mean, you're, you still got the undersized lot.
But they did it pre nineteen seventy-four. They wrote the name before seven short, and that's, that's when it was technically subdivided.
No, but really, it could be in order to make it strictly legal with the state, we would be correct to set the thirty-five way.
Okay. Um.
One more time.
Okay, you just tell me what. I read through that, I was trying to make heads or tails on, by somebody, I understood it completely, I was.
Yeah, see, that, that's a lot less per project.
Yep.
And I'll let you go with that on the day.
Could that have all been put on that one application just for?
No.
Okay.
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 Said to the state. What's your little order class?
Perfect, I, I, I didn't understand that, I'm sorry, I just.
No, that's fine, I mean, I've just done this.
I, I, we're fortunate to have somebody that knows as much as you do about all this stuff, that's, honestly, I'm not, you're already approved, it's fine kissing, but I'm, I'm impressed.
But I mean, we have done this.
Yeah.
And, I mean, we're looking at lots of young people out there, or fertile. Four. But they're created before nineteen seventy-one, we had to pull through and grab all of them, so they're thirty-five way. We thought we had found all the lots in, in county that is separated by county road.
Yeah.
Apparently, we haven't.
Yeah, there's still, I know like three, I can.
I can get together to make sure I have all my.
Well, some of her hair. One little piece that you got on the, on the.
Yeah.
That's not.
No. It shows on your manager.
Yeah, but, well, that's a county road. But county.
I will get it cheap with.
That's, that's the extension of county two forty-one. Two forty-one don't go out around, two fifty comes around, that's what that neighbor was saying that day.
Can we adjourn? Can we adjourn?
Yeah.
You guys can keep, no, they have to, she has to, there's more agenda times.
And now we're, we're.
Well, it's all on Dorothy, yeah, it's all.
Yeah, and I can run through my report quickly. So, we're good, okay. Um, so I need to convince you to look at the report across the board, or that.
I just want.
For the month, just compared to last year in April, as well as overall for the year. Um, the zone permit fees were, were at eighty thousand last year, so far this year, we're at eighteen thousand, just for permit fees. Our overall total impact is, was a hundred thousand, we're now at two hundred twenty-nine thousand. So, two hundred, well, um, overall second permits, last year we were at thirty-one, we're at forty-six right now. Dwellings, we were at thirty, we're at forty-four, non-dwellings, fifty-six to seventy-one, bringing our total permits last year, we're, we were at eighty-six this time of year. Right now, we're at a hundred fifteen, we're not slowing down. Just to quickly go through, we only did fifteen compliance letters this past month. Um, four of them were cease and desist letters. Of those cease and desists, we had one, two were hazardous. One was a hazardous material issue. Health, health issues. The other three were illegal STRs that we were able to identify and closed down. Now, I still have two illegal STRs that I identified, that I still am working with and working on shutting down. Or get them moved over, we did have one that is agreed to go over to a long-term rental opposed to a short-term rental, which was, to me, was a yay yay win-win. One thing that we aren't noticing, when we spent Friday working on STRs. At least two and maybe three, if memory serves me correctly, we have, that are current STRs that are not, they do not have the agent that they have put on their application as their agents any longer. One has one out of the springs that I was able to identify and never did hire the person that they put on their application. So, we might wanna, uh, when we make changes to our recommendations, sort of changes to the resolution, maybe tighten that up a little bit? And the verbiage as to how we'll handle that.
Well, the, the STR, what I would think is, if you put a timeline on it, they'll, if there's anything in the STR that they're not meeting, they have a sixty-day window. Sixty-one days, they lose their SGP.
It's five days that they have to notify us.
Yes.
That they changed.
They're not, so they're not, so they're not.
They, they're not in compliance, they need a cease and desist.
That's what I mean, they're all of us to agree upon.
Yeah, the mint are beyond, in the SGP system, that's just.
And I'd like to make another motion.
Yes.
We're a hundred twenty-eight thousand dollar boardroom last year, my motion is, that I recommend to the county commissioner, or the BNC office. That they hire an individual under the direction of Dorothy to help solve the issue of the county, that is my motion.
Full-time refer to that.
Full-time, two years.
I have to write this down and put it in the minutes? I have, just to kind of update you guys on, on that regard, I found some money in my budget. Maybe I knew, didn't know what to ask for, didn't wanna add extra staff, trying to be a good steward for, to county, with county's money. Um, I have found money in my budget to hire a temporary, part-time, summer help. It'll be.
What am I gonna get for that? If you get a student, he's gonna be lost in the paper. You've gotta get somebody that's got some, knows what they're doing, so they go out, they go over running.
I, to be honest with you, what this is gonna cover, that, what I'm asking for is help in the office. Um, there's no way that I can miss a day, or Delana can miss a day, or a couple days during the summer, and the other person's job not go to the website. So, I'm not even, it takes two people to do compliance, so we're lost. I, I am very leery to go out there by myself, and that's why these kind of being Fridays, as our compliance day, and Delana and I go out together. But, um, is that enough?
What do you think about asking to make that position permanent, though?
I'm usually.
I want to do that and this.
I do, do you think, do you need a part-time person or a multi-person? I definitely need a part-time summer person. Could I use a full-time, an, an additional full-time person? Possibly.
Do you wanna try a part-time?
During the winter, do I need three people in that office? Possibly, I, it's, it's tough, do I have room for three people in that office, really not, not really.
The thing that worked for our house, honestly, if you had somebody that was out there four days a week. Going to these sites, looking at, they don't need two people to do that, they could do it with one, they don't, you give them a list what they're looking for, they bring that back to you, and you do the enforcement.
Put in your, um, motion to ask for a vehicle. I'm just being real honest, the vehicle that I have wrote down on us, in the middle of a. Cease and desist, had somebody rolled up on us, that would have been scary.
Is it county vehicle?
Yeah. The vehicle that we have is a nineteen ninety. Liver, Jeep Liberty. It doesn't have very many miles on it, but it's getting old. And I've had it in the shop three times this year.
Et cetera.
Um.
Tell them, yeah.
I, I'm not, I, I, we need something that has a little bit more ground clearance.
You want to tell them?
Something with some ground clearance, I know it doesn't have, sure, I'll take on it.
You need a vehicle, and then you need your vehicle fitted for somebody else, but you need another, you need another pair of hands. Jackie said she needed four vehicles. We're seeing, you know, this guy is out of hand, and if we keep letting this happen for over sixty-eight months, it's gonna be totally unresolved.
Aren't we making a bid, yes, can I see how it got to the point where we, we're just sending out letters and there was no follow-up? Yes, absolutely, there's not enough people in there for the follow-up. There's where you need it.
There's not enough people to watch the SUVs and the STRs, there's just not enough, not possible.
Subsequent stuff.
All the steps. And it's gotten out of hand, and the more it gets out of hand, the more people talk about it, the more it gets out of hand.
And they're talking right now that we're, we're toe in the line, um, the word's out there, the word around the lake. And, and I wish I could have brought you pictures, because this was a, a success story. We have a gentleman out at the lake that's renting a lot, he did not have a septic, he was not necessarily dumping his waste on the ground, or pretty much. He has turned everything around. The lot was probably the junkiest looking lot out there, wouldn't you say? He has cleaned it up, based on our recommendations and working with him, it, it really is a, a positive situation for the county as a whole.
Good, now get Mr. Langs to clean up all this crap.
But it's by fear that you will cause this to happen. At least for ninety-five percent, the other five will be fine.
Okay.
But, but the thing about it is, you got, at least for a timeframe, maybe a year, six months, I don't know, you gotta have a help. To get your hands around it, then we can monitor. But these STRs are out of control, they're just adding and adding. You've got to get your.
They are, and it's gonna get worse.
And it is gonna get worse, and until we get an attorney, it will get worse, because nobody's spared you.
Even if we have an attorney, I don't know that the attorney's the answer, looking at it from my perspective. If we can do the fines ahead of involving an attorney, that's gonna save the county a lot of money. And attorney can help me do a list penance, which is gonna keep them from selling their home, that's really about all that we have written in the resolution. That the fine, monetary fines that are written in there are not gonna make a.
Well, unless you shoot over the hazardous waste and all the other stuff, which then you fully DPA it, that has cloud. People do not like spilling DPA, I've had to deal with it all the way through, it's not fun. But I mean, the first person that you take and make an example of, will be the first person that scares the crowd, ninety-five percent. Got to make an example of one person, I hate to say that, the person that keeps pushing you, pushing you, pushing you, is the one that gets taken to the counter. I hate to say that, but that's what stops the rest of them going, oh my God, they hate business. Right now, it's a slap one, and a hundred dollars means nothing. We, did we, did we ever present to the commissioners that ten thousand a week, that's worth.
Part of work, yeah.
Will you, can you make your?
You got your motion?
My motion is that, my motion is that the county commissioner utilized the excess money we made, or to board his budget. To hire a part-time slash full-time individual to help with the ordinances, I guess, plus hiring, plus. Orders is, uh.
Help, just.
Regulations, or whatever. Plus, plus of the body and other used vehicle. To replace one inventory and fix that, now you have two. So that would be my motion.
Move to the second. There was motion.
So to recommend.
Yes, recommend the commissioners.
And you can play.
They'll just love us.
I'll, I'll do the best I can.
To recommend the commissioners that they use. Some of the money, the extra money that the office has taken in to hire part or full-time person.
He said full-time.
Part-time slash full-time.
I think Dorothy needs to sit down and figure that out.
Yeah.
I think we need to get her good, and Delana the opportunity to sit down and figure it out.
And a part-time.
To increase staffing and to rectify the vehicle situation.
Yeah, that's right.
That's good. Okay. All in favor, say if I'm gonna say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, name?
Are you saying name?
No, I didn't say name.
Oh. You said aye, I'm sorry.
All right. If I'm over the president, I'll consider to be deserved. This is a bill actually.
No.
We are, yeah, is it possible to get this, a move in order?
We have, aren't we?
Oh, will you let us know?
I'll try to jump by the body.
Yeah, they are, but it's hard to beat all this, but we can, yeah. Will you let us? Yeah, yeah, but it's hard to beat all this, but yeah, will you let us know?
And also, on S U Ps, would you like to have these priors?
See, we were tossing that, you printed up.
We have, yeah, we have, we have a lot of differences. I was hoping I'd get one.
We're in trouble, thank you, next time, welcome. We'd like there to be a little one.
I tried to.
It worked, huh? All right.